Any comments from the public about those two components, just those two components? Any comments on either of those components, special areas? I think we've, I've read it. Read it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I have not.
I have not.
Um, this is Paul Sorecki, I probably the one to send in their comment is very extensive and I don't think you should go through everyone. It says list of all the important ecological areas in the county that I could think of with some supportive maps.
So why don't you, why don't you give us a summary of your comments?
Hmm.
Or give us your comments.
We have it up there. I'm just saying that I, I just feel the old plan is inadequately addressing the, the special natural areas for wildlife. And by, and you should include biodiversity into that. And I put in, in the beginning, some precautionary principles, do no harm to the environment. Use precautionary principle, be aware of environmental generational amnesia, which is more people they have, the less land there is. And then the people think that's status quo, and then they cut it further and further and further. And that's how we lose all these areas just for little posted stamps wilderness areas because they're traded off. Because people didn't know what we had in the past. And I think that's really important and use science in decision making for mapping and areas of, of high biodiversity and include abrupt climate change mitigations. And if you really want me to go through all, all of these pages, I can, but.
I, I don't think we needed to do that.
Yeah.
Seems like, uh, me anyway, it looked like a lot of these areas would be more appropriate to rest of the natural resources. On it.
It says special areas wildlife.
Well, yeah, but I think it's more, it's more geared towards historical spots and.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I understand, appreciate your comments. Um, and you know, we'll take that into consideration to get to the.
So what are you going to put for what for special wildlife?
Well, it just doesn't belong in this, in this component, in my opinion.
Okay.
Any other comments on, uh, either of these two components, special areas of sites?
Kind of more questions to comment.
You want to come up and?
I'm Jean Gerth, um, I live in Sagal. Uh, I've been trying to follow this process and I don't do it full time, but it's been very confusing and I don't understand the rush behind it. I came to one of these meetings that was talking about goals and objectives, and now I understand that they've been forwarded to the commissioners. Your recommendations on goals and objectives, but they haven't been accepted yet. Correct.
Have a hearing on it October twenty sixth.
Okay, and so then to me, it's like, why are we talking about? If we're not sure what the goals and objectives are yet, to put time into further comments when I don't know if that's going to change or not. So that's just, I'm kind of confused about the process and also it's cumbersome and I know you guys are all volunteers too, and you're putting in time and I want to help and put in some time too, but it's pretty cumbersome having to come to one meeting for each of these components. Um, so I think I would like to see a more organized presentation to the public so that there could be more meaningful public input about this. Um, and my only question is just, I mean, how do I follow this? I can't, I get on the website and I can't find the meetings or the agendas, and maybe that's my fault, but where, where is this being publicly advertised? Like, how would I, how should I have known about today's meeting and which components are going to come up at the next meeting?
Discussing, this is called a comment, uh, is on these two components and the mission will be reviewing for the first time, some other.
Sure. So this is the planning department's website. There's a big box here that we added recently to the specific.
Well, that helps.
And it was, so here's what this adjusted and this word, here's what we reviewed so far, there's a link right here to the intended.
See, yeah, I've never seen this. I don't know, I mean, I was looking yesterday and I didn't see it, but I'll go look again. I think that's really helpful. And, and I, is this in the papers or anything? You getting taken out ads in the papers and getting on the radio stations and?
Don't even require on. Legal advertising. So what the commission has decided is that the two components that were finalized in the last month or so. They're going to do a theory for that, that'll get published and there'll be a theory for except public comment, then make other applications for those. So they're reviewing component by component, making updates and changes and I do a theory for the depending of support for adoption, which is actually a similar process.
Okay. Okay, so the ones that you talked about last time, you're still going to have a public hearing on at a future date.
For your staff report, will you give interest like this, uh, but at the end they'll make a, a decision on that, either recommend approval or?
Okay, so there's another chance for input there.
And then it goes to the board for an additional.
Okay, so are those things going to be advertised in the paper? The hearings will be advertised and will you put in something that explains what this process is? So people know what they're, what the hearing is for? Okay. Right, and I admit I need to spend more time teaching myself about this, but I'd also like to see it be made easier for the public. Cause it's a lot of new people in town, a lot of people who don't know what this process is, so thank you.
I've been, well, we were just talking with Dango Radford of the.
Yeah, yeah.
So next time he's in my office, I'll chat with him, see if he can publish a, a article for us, say, here's what's going on and here's what it's like. Where, here's where you can notify the commission.
Yeah.
Well, next time is at all chat with him.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for your work.
Dave, to be clear then, uh, for her, uh, use, these are workshops that we're having.
Yes.
And then there will be a formal public hearing that will receive legal notification for all members. So you're invited anytime to these workshops and we receive that input and listen, not necessarily acting on it, but by digesting it over a period of time before the public hearings come to fruition. So this is a process.
Okay, so in a workshop, are you presenting things then? Because that's my comment. We're not going over this and saying, here's what we're talking about today.
We don't, the, the components that we'll be discussing each meeting are, they're on the, on the website.
So here's the agenda for tonight, right? So we have these two components that were opening up for public comment. This was a workshop that, that this board heard what, two weeks ago, they made a few of these, they made some edits and um, then they receive public comment, that's not a hearing, there's additional public comment, right? From here, if they feel it's appropriately addressed, they will then make a, tell staff, hey, let's schedule a hearing for this. And then we'll get a hearing, we'll do this again, they'll make a recommendation to the board, it's a whole initiative hearing, the doctors and. So I, I don't think it's a rush process, I mean, each one of these components is going to take two and a half months plus the process, so and then then.
I, I just.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, it's just my eyes blaze over all this stuff and I do want to, you know, I do want to be involved and I know that other people want to be involved. It's difficult. And so, you know, anything that, you know, you can do to help people understand it. Cause you know, it's important. And I did have one comment, um, actually on these two comments and on every comment that you address is to be sure that if you're considering climate data, that you use um, up to date data number one and projections of what's going to be happening. Climate is changing, almost, I imagine every one of these is going to be. Thank you.
I have one, one. One point on community design. Um, and the point I want to make is that when you design communities, we need to allow for landscape permeability, which means allow wildlife to move through the majority of the communities unimpeded, even if it's agricultural land to disperse through it, or if it's forest land. Um, when, when you see all these plastic fenced gray housed communities that are absolutely horrible, just sprouting up all over place. They negatively affect the permeability of the landscape and the wildlife and the plants that need to move through it.
That's, thank you. All right.
I just had a question, Jake, can you answer something coming? Oh, yeah, Matt, Lynn Scott Sagal, on the, on the two topics we're going to discuss or can make comments on tonight is, is community design and special areas. I, I, I wasn't able to find a working draft and what was done from the prior from your last meeting. I, I couldn't find it, I didn't, maybe I was looking for a spot, I don't know.
It was not included?
Okay, cause that was my concern is I wanted to make comments tonight regarding those two, but I didn't see where the working draft was to make comments on it.
On either one?
Either one.
Correct, I could, that, that's correct.
They should have, no, they should have done.
And so that, that's my only concern is that I want, I had a big list and I thought, well, maybe you guys already covered that. I wasn't able to meet, make your last meeting, so I didn't know if you guys had a working document or were at stage.
And you're obviously going to talk about it tonight. Comments.
Perhaps if. Okay, my, my suggestion maybe would be for you to kind of go through that if you have a working draft, it looks like you have it pulled up. Maybe run through that, then we can comment on that if, if it's okay to comment after you kind of ran through the draft or as you go even, I don't know.
Uh, oh, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, okay.
Bring it back to the commission and we'll go through it, uh, and, uh, I, I know that some of the other commissioners have comments on this.
Right, thank you.
That and then we'll open it back up, so bring it back to the commission, uh, address community design. I know there are some other comments, so anybody want to address? I know there are some, there are some grammatical changes. Um, but there, I think there are some subject points to. So in just to kind of start out, um, the, the, the comprehensive plan that was in two thousand and five actually didn't have this component at all. Had goals, policies, but it had no text. So what happened with this particular one, and I was involved in trying to, um, put together the text for this, um, was to go back to the sub area committees, uh, and see what they had to say about the community design, if anything. And include that in there and, uh, look at the goals, objectives and policies that we already, um, recommended to the commissioners. And, uh, meld that together and put together the strategy, so that's what we've done, um, and, uh, last time we discussed this, uh, we've had a few changes to it. But yeah, I'm sure there are, are more. So any commissioners like to address any changes to this particular component? Oh, you seem to have some comments.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, um, at the last meeting, we, I think I took an action to come up with some language to replace. Statement, more general objectives for controlling density would be more desirable than mandating specific lot sizes. So that's.
Is that in there or is that?
It is, it is in there, I, I worked on that and sent it to Swatty and Jake, I don't know, a week or so ago, maybe we can have, no.
Is that incorporated into the text or is it just in your comment?
It's incorporated into the text.
Okay.
It's, it's the paragraph that starts with the determination of land use and zoning district locations.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Um, and then has includes concludes with that list below that, that list below that is the end of my comment.
Right, right, well taken. Um. Any other comments?
You.
Mike, okay.
Yeah, my, my comments, I, I apologize, I was, uh, learning as I was, uh, clicking. And so there's a few, uh, added clicks in there. Uh, I did not change the text, I don't believe, I may have highlighted them, but my comments are minor. But made nevertheless. So. Such as add date when informed, I'm not sure right now what that was, but it was more of a question to the group.
Talking about the sub area committees?
Yeah, what, what were you referring to? That's what I'm trying to find. Unfortunately, this particular editing software doesn't link it right back to the, you know, usually you highlight a text and then you get a note, a comment. There was, yeah, but I don't see.
So they tend to point for that concept, um, like this guy.
Oh, there it is, it's a little underscore.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Where is it?
At the beginning of the, the paragraph, the paragraph says the county forms five sub area.
Right.
There's a little underscore between the and county. And that's the, that's the, uh, footnote, kind of footnote marker to go to the first comment. Wow.
I don't see it on mine.
I don't either. Not sure.
Oh, well, no, you don't have the.
I don't know when the sub area committees were established, but it's like twenty seven.
Oh, I have to.
This is Google Doc, right? I think I have to highlight.
So that I think the question was when the subgroups were formed.
Like this.
They actually were formed, they didn't all start at the same time. Yeah, they kind of staggered.
I guess my underlying question is, is that information that was made by those subgroups, I assume being new are still valid today?
Yes.
Is he?
Yeah, they, they, okay, so, so that, that answers my question, comment, whatever it is, uh.
I think it may be appropriate to provide some history of the sub areas and what they did, how they were formed, et cetera, et cetera, but I don't think it should be here. I, I, maybe in some introductory statement of sort of globally, this is the process we followed back in two thousand seventeen. There started being community meetings and five sub areas were formed, et cetera, et cetera. And, and the documents that those five groups created are in many ways the foundation.
And are those five areas listed some, some, somewhere?
Well, they are.
They're on your. I, I read them somewhere, yeah.
They're on the website, but in that introductory statement, I don't find what they are.
Exactly.
We, you know, we've been there.
And the actual. The sub area committees.
But you ask the obvious questions that other people would ask, so they're good questions.
Dave, I was going to ask on, on your comment where you say availability of urban water and or sewer services.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as we've talked about a few times, finding urban and, and whatever we stayed there, matching whatever code it says. And then sewer services and or something that allows for septic, but it's community system or something.
So to me, the way I would, the way I would address that is I was just trying to provide a general list of the kinds of criteria that we would use to draw land use designations and zoning district boundaries.
So you wouldn't necessarily.
And at the land use section, assuming we have a discussion about this and assuming we decide some of these are appropriate, we would talk about that in more detail and define what those terms actually mean.
So, but would that language go into this document? What's written here?
Well, yes, what I've written here would go in there, but no more, in this section, no more detail than that.
And that's why I think that we have to clarify urban water sewer service, because those are pretty specific. And then if they change or say we start talking about septic in others section, or we talk about, you know, community wells or something like that, that maybe doesn't line up with urban water. I just see us.
Well, that's a good.
You know, they handle.
They, they, they should match.
That whole topic, see, I'm looking at the state code under community design and the latter part of the sentence says and suggested patterns and standards for community design development and beautification. So I can see where that fits here, but it also fits in public services and in land use.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so do we want to be careful to either say the same thing in all components about it or make a reference here for, uh, public services C, the public servicing section, facilities and utilities section? Uh, that's a dilemma all the way through. They, they do overlook.
I, I think the list is good and just, uh, making sure that the language matches.
I think availability of water and, and or server, urban water and or sewer services doesn't mean I mean, that's one of the criteria, but doesn't necessarily mean it's.
Haven't talked about how that criteria applies or what it is or how, what those definitions and terms are.
And any of these are in some of the.
Yeah, so.
Right, so.
Well, I hear what you're saying and I cordially disagree because I have sat in finding plenty of meetings where people have had one. It says urban water and here's the definition for urban water.
Well, but what we meant was how would you change that?
I would. We'll get back to you.
Okay. I don't, it's defined in, in the code.
That's another part. If something has subsequently since two thousand five, two thousand eight, if it's been defined in code, do we need to bring it up here in the comp plan?
I think so.
Yes, maybe.
I just think they should match or just.
No, there's no, no a priori reason for the new comp plan to match the existing code.
Right.
We might, might want to make, we might want to drive changes into the code based on things that have happened in the last ten years or whatever, since the last comp plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, the code was written.
If all we're doing is writing a complaint to match the current code, this is a waste of time. You know, look.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I think the language here is very broad and, and well said. Uh, because it says it may include, doesn't have to. They include these characteristics, but not limited to, so you can drive a bus through that pretty well. Yet it, it's mindful that these are considerations to remember when you're making more, uh, definitive uh, ideas. And I think in, in some ways that ties into the environment and the wildlife to make sure that those uh, issues are by these comments being addressed. But it doesn't have to be, and it's not limited by these issues. So I think he's given, uh, plenty of, um, flexibility here, yet guidance.
I mean, one of the questions I would ask Josh is, is there a more general way to talk about water and generically, I'll just say sewer, because I'm a better word right now.
Yeah.
That, that, it doesn't, yes, it did, it just changed.
What happened now?
Yeah, I don't have it on my screen.
Uh, I clicked.
Mine disappeared.
I didn't touch it.
A more general way to say that, but doesn't, but doesn't head you towards that specific definition.
Took out the word urban and just said sewer. And.
Availability of water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Because, but when we call it urban sewer or, or I can't see, it's not up anymore, but.
Yeah. How do we get it back up?
First place.
Oh, we, we eliminated Dave's comment.
This whole, this paragraph.
Bless you.
Looks like you were, you were thinking land use because it, it talks about the determination of land use, location and boundaries, and then below is the determinative land use designations. So that belongs in the land use.
I was, I was because the, remember the original statement that I was working with had to do with density.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's where it from, that's, yeah.
So.
Which may not have been.
That was what was in my head.
May not have belonged in community design anyway. So I think after this discussion and better understanding where you're coming from, I think my only recommendation would be to take out the word urban and just leave availability of water and or sewer, sewer service.
I mean, I'm okay with it.
Well, and I think that just makes it more, more general.
Yeah.
Could you add the word, urban say community? No, is that my? Well, it's community design, I mean. Uh, okay, yeah, that. If you.
We, we, um, I did something or somebody did something that we eliminated Dave's comments and we'd love to get them back, you know, they were good.
I got them all night.
You do?
A lot of those.
Oh, you're in a, you're in a, I think you're in a P D F version.
Oh, this is just, this is where it started. But then Dave's comments.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, there it is, I got it back, there it is.
Oh, yeah.
It's under.
It came back. Then eighteen twenty-two. There it is.
Yeah.
I had to, I had it back out of the file and get back into.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so we've eliminated urban, sir, urban and otherwise it's.
Yeah. But, okay.
This, all right, so.
This is Carol, but any.
Yes, one last correction I was asking about was in the second paragraph, second sentence, I highlighted the words could be. And I should, yes, it should say were. Well, could be ascertained, I mean, were they or were they not? Well, they were kind of suggested, I guess. Yeah, see.
That was my interpretation, so.
Not addressed, because as was stated here, although this component, these components, or this component was not addressed, a separate component in most of the plans. Some of the principles you want to expand it could be ascertained from their write-ups.
Okay.
Their plans, I mean, it, it, it's fine, because that's a reminds me of another plan I, I read and it said very similar, then the county and they had three sub areas and they each wrote up their thing. Presented it to the county, just like here. And it said, the planning commission drew from these submittals and boiled it down to this. It was a very nice way to put it, I thought, because that's, that's, I, I think that's what's.
Well, definitely, I want to be nice, so we can leave this.
All right.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners, uh, we have a, obviously Matt wants to make a question. All right, Matt, if you got a comment on community design?
Yeah, if you want to scroll back, back to that urban water and sewer. My suggestion was going to be this, uh, where it says ability above, now you struck out urban. Current code defines urban, we always use urban type water and sewer, and I understand that, yeah, we, I don't believe we can go ahead and create new definitions for Barnard County in the comprehensive plan. Now granted, it's going to be a guiding document, but I don't believe we can create new definitions in the comprehensive plan as to what urban type water and sewer services will be. We had a file in front of the zoning commission here just a few weeks ago, is regarding an LSAS, a large soil absorption system. And we had, um, Catherine from Panel Health, we had um, you know, some comments from DEQ and what we, I understand that we don't necessarily have to oblige by our current ordinance, but we do have to oblige by state code, also IDAPA. And what was brought up in this LSAS, uh, was fifty-eight point zero one point zero three. That creates these different definitions and we have to make sure we fall in line with IDAPA as well as Idaho state code. And currently it says urban type in our ordinance, and I don't think that would be too out of line to leave urban type in there. I don't think it's a problem if you take out urban as, as well.
Urban type, as I recall, isn't defined.
No.
Has created, it, it's created. We had a file where that created a lot of confusion.
Yep.
Okay.
It wasn't defined and nobody really could say, well, what is urban type?
Right, and so what we had to do on that files, we had to go ahead and look at fifty-eight point four, one point four three, if I'm not mistaken, that's what the file was. Um, to go ahead and follow IDAPA, you know, and DEQs and panel health regulations to go ahead and try to stay everything conform as much as we possibly can, and that's, that's kind of the point I wanted to make.
I think we solved the problem by limiting urban.
I think you did too.
Thank you.
So I will bring this back to the mission, um as modified uh at this hearing and. Public comments, we're in line of the public comments. Is this component um ready to be set for public here? I, I still object, I think what Dave added doesn't belong here. It belongs in the land use. Because it talks about, right there, that the sins going into the list. The criteria used to determine land use designations, that is land use component. I think it's, I think it's appropriate here, it may be appropriate in the land use as well, but I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I think that, I think there's overlap in a lot of them, right? And it, and as Dave stated, this doesn't really get into the weeds, but it, but it does generally. Talk about some of the things that should be looked at to the community. Well, so I think community design. Mister Chair, can I make the motion then to?
Yeah, I, I would just make a, a point. One of the, one of the. Items in that list is wildlife habitat and migration. Yes, go ahead.
To move that this is, this amended document for the discussions here uh before in this evening. Be brought forward to.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to community, uh special areas.
About the discussion on that motion.
Want to discuss it further?
Well, that's what you do, you have a motion on the floor, you get a second, then it's open for discussion, the motion. The way it works.
But we moved it already, so however, it's already. Okay, special areas. I, I think what happened here was that uh it wasn't really done. And we tried to insert, because we didn't believe that it had changed very much. And that's what I think.
The top three hundred places to visit in Bonner County.
Yeah.
No, that was recreation.
One of the things you need to do, we need to do is we need to eliminate. The address, the inaccurate address in the planning department, and take out J U B engine.
So. We, we maybe ought to have a little discussion about. The, the comments about the. I'm sorry, I don't, forgot your name, but. Oh, Sarecki made. I, I think I agree with Al that, that in general, those wildlife and. And sort of natural resources based. Information makes more sense to be in the natural resources component. But I, but I, I mean, if, if there's a different, more specific definition from state code about what should be in there. I'm hoping to listening, but.
Well, I think. That the. Original text. Was really, was called for by code.
Okay.
And you recall, when we, when we did the goals, objectives, policies, one of the things we did was incorporate some comments by. The historical society about leaving some of this stuff in. But, you know, I mean, to that said, I mean, uh obviously, we haven't looked at this, um this, this is essentially the old. Um, the old text. With the exception of. Well, there's, it's right there, I mean the. Yeah, the text, the code is right there, so. Special areas are um special areas or sites component. In an analysis of areas, sites, structures, and historical, archaeological, contextual, ecological, wildlife. Are the ecological wildlife scenic analysis, the code says, includes a description of designated sanctuary, a scenic bylaws, highways, excuse me. Pullouts, wildlife viewing. But with that, you know, it seems to me that. Try to move this along, I would just basically uh. Restate the. Component as it, as it was in the current comp plan. Comments on that, and I would take out, there was a first paragraph in there that. Although I lost it. Anybody else have any comments about that? Well, actually, we have public comments on this.
Well, before we get to the public. Just kind of write up from two thousand two. That listed every known cultural site in Bonner County, regardless of jurisdiction. Um, it uh, yeah, it's very inclusive, but to what end?
To comply with county code?
Alright, then look strictly at the code, which says. You're supposed to write a plan that covers your jurisdiction, not somebody else's. The dams belong to either the federal government or to a Vista Corporation. And all the area around them, land use is not going to affect those sites. The sites within the city of Sandpoint, county land use is not going to affect those sites. Why are they listed? This was a problem with the existing comp plan, there was no distinction between incorporated and unincorporated area in the county. And that violated the mandate in Lupa, that said you cover your jurisdiction only, you don't have to cover somebody else's jurisdiction. So it's a, and what that leads to is then people start harping, well, wait a minute, it says here in your comp plan. That this has to be protected, and it's somebody else's responsibility. And yet the public gets upset because it's listed in our comp plans implying that the county has to protect. Not so.
Well, I think you're going too far with that, but.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I don't.
I know you don't. And it's in the city of Sandpoint, it's still within the county.
True enough, but what, where are you missing where it says? This plan shall include all land within the jurisdiction of the governing board, sixty-five, chapter sixty-five oh eight.
You're suggesting the word jurisdiction is troubling you?
Well, yeah, the jurisdiction of the governing board, the board of county commissioners, are in the unincorporated area of Bonner County. That's their jurisdiction, they have no jurisdiction in Sandpoint, Priest River, Dover. None, except for ports.
So you're suggesting go through this document and take out anything that is.
That was my suggestion three years ago when we started this, was let's go through and read out the stuff that doesn't belong, first place. Second, that has nothing to do with land use regulation or action, or future desirable.
Conditions.
Conditions.
Desirable future conditions.
There you go. Um, you know, which is, there's plenty, there's plenty that's there that just doesn't help. If anything, it hurts.
I think at a glance, there's an awful lot in here that, that is not in the county jurisdiction.
Or towers.
And I agree, it should be taken out, it, it just.
It overloads the document.
Yeah, it confuses things, because it puts a lot of stuff in there that really isn't, doesn't have any bearing on what we're going to do or. Zoning commission or future boards of county commissioners. And, and I think it should be taken out, and, and then it'll include all the stuff that's on. Uh federal lands, which there's quite a bit of it, it's here.
There.
Why would you take out?
Love to go, why would you take out? Why would you take out um? Sites that are on federal land.
Because the county has no jurisdiction over federal lands.
Doesn't, so what?
And the, and the sites.
Supposed to be special areas of sites.
But in the, in the, in the area of, if the county has jurisdiction.
As, as a former county commissioner, those areas, those federal lands, those uh Indian lands where I, county I oversaw. Had the uh federal military training center and uh Indian tribes with cultural sites. And although we had no jurisdiction over them, we had to be very aware of them in order to make good decisions. It's just kind of like being aware of your next door neighbor, what they're doing, so. Uh, what you're doing could be affected by your neighbor. So although we don't have jurisdiction over it, we have to be aware of it, and I think the history of this area is. Rich and it serves a purpose in being aware of it, even though you don't have jurisdiction over. So what does that mean? Included.
That, that means, I mean, that means that it's helpful to have it in this document as a, as a uh cornerstone. Or as a reference point, even though you don't have authority over, if you're, if you're going to do that, then what? Uh how much of this county really do the county commissioners have authority over, twenty percent?
Land use.
Most of it.
Most of it.
Much of this county is a, is federal forest.
Well, sixty percent, but of the privately held county. Seventy percent is rural and unincorporated, that's for seventy percent of the populations.
That, that's fine, but this is one entire county.
Okay, so when the natural, the county commissioners years ago formed a natural resource commission. That commission was tasked with looking at the natural resources, obviously, and they did. Their, most of their effort was dealing with the federal government and the state government. How does Bonner County interact on those topics with the federal and state government? They came up with all kinds of, of proposals and, and policies. And that is a standalone policy of Bonner County, and how did, how to interact with. Forest service when they come up with a forest plan, or some special roadless area or something, and the state department of lands on the endowment properties. Again, that's, they, that commission came to us, the planning and zoning commission, and said. We recommend that you incorporate this in the comprehensive plan as a resource component. It had nothing to do with land use regulation of the properties, the privately held properties in Bonner County, nothing. So that's how the commissioners adopted it as a standalone policy of Bonner County towards federal and state lands. And it's the same, kind of the same thing here.
Well, I would just suggest the error, I would err on having too much, but not enough. Not trying to operate in a bad country at work. For people coming in, they don't have an awareness of this, I think this is beneficial to be adopted.
Don, one thing that hits me is I, I think of some of the things that we've worked on with like dual points, progress, address, and other issues in the county. There's language in here, like under road building, it says. Uh, projects within the county that receive federal funding must be reviewed for archaeology. Archaeological resources, uh resources to the state, support whole preservation office. Yeah, that's, that is. Great information, that's useful and helpful, that is. Something that should be considered as we think about, you know, how do we create another point of address. Or egress, I don't, I don't think taking any of this out. And I, I get your point, I see what you're saying, okay, if it's not our baby, why do we need it here, but. It's good information that, that helps make decisions down the road. And, and again, I would. I don't see it hurting anything.
I'm not sure, I think it's clutter. Is, is what I think, and, and I'm just scanning through it as we're talking here. You know, here's one. Osprey may be viewed all over Bonner County, one highly accessible area is located near the south shore at the mouth of the Ponderay River. In front of the Swan's Landing Restaurant. There is a piling in the water on top of which is a nest, Osprey returned to this nest every year.
Protect it. Okay, so, so when the county. So they're putting in new docks at the landing. It was, was that taken into account? Was there some special permit, some special action to protect that, it's already there. Because that nest is known, is known to the US Fish and Wildlife Service, and they're the ones protecting.
Why do we, excuse me, why do we have history books then, because obviously the history, all these books have no relevance to us today.
The gist of the land use planning act for the state of Idaho is to put something into effect that. Boils down to land use regulation or action. Stop forgetting that. Plug it in, that's the limitation of our work. It should be. Couldn't it? What it says.
There's, we just get rid of the whole thing, just.
I'm not, I'm not sure which way we should go with this, but I'm wondering if somebody could explain to me. How is what Don's saying, which kind of makes sense to me, because it's exactly what we did with the recreation chapter. So how, well, just a second, so how, I mean. Are some of these more important because they're historical as opposed to just being recreational sites? I mean, do we give it a different level of importance? Because I, I'm seeing Don's point to a degree here, um because it's exactly what. I did with the recreation chapter.
And, and that was a good example, because there was so much stuff in there, one that didn't even, didn't even exist in the unincorporated portion of county. Um, regardless of the fact that everybody in the unincorporated portion uses some of those records, that's not the point, but we didn't eliminate it. We just made it a dependence.
The whole thing?
No, direct in recreation.
I know, we kept everything in that offense.
Did not keep everything, some of it was outdated.
Right.
All outdated and. So, no, was it, not that it was out of context, it was to comply with going, I think, you know, you. Okay, this is sixty-five oh eight, says basically the plan shall include all land within the jurisdiction of governing board, doesn't say, you can't talk about. Uh, other things, because the next sentence says the plan shall consider previous and existing conditions, trends, compatibility of land uses. Desirable goals and objectives, or desirable uh future situations for each planning component. Plan with maps, charts, reports, should be based upon the following components. And of course, one of those is special areas.
Right.
I, I think you, when you, when you, when you just take it, when you say, we can only look at unincorporated land, nothing else. I, I don't think that's what the code means. That's way too restrictive. Uh, an interpretation of that.
Should we include areas in Cootenay County? Boundary County?
Hayden Lake is a wonderful place, it's a recreation site.
But, but what is special?
Our cities that school.
I think it's everything that we're talking about here is within Bonner County. Hootenay County is not in Bonner County. Well, I don't think those are equivalent.
I, I think there's an awful lot in here that I, I.
There are things that cross that, cross the line between.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But, and so there's impact there, like being aware of your neighbor.
Well, but is it going to lead to a land use regulation where a parcel comes in?
It doesn't say that, it actually doesn't say that in sixty-five oh eight, that it has to relate to a land. It doesn't say that anymore. The following components, as they may apply to land use regulations and actions.
They relate to.
Well, not, not that they relate directly to a land use action.
I don't know, Dave was going to say there, or he did say Dave, but I kind of agree with you, I mean, the document itself is very. Broad and could be uh pared it down quite a bit.
I, I just think stuff like this that, that really has. No conceivable bearing on. On land use or even desirable future conditions. As, as given the control that. The planning and zoning commissions and the county commissioners have. Um, it just clutters the document with information that gets in the way of really understanding the stuff that's important. Um, and I'm looking at another section here on scenic pullouts. Johnson Peak Vista, this is an overlook of Lake Ponderay from the monarchs, there is no historical or archaeological significance to the site. However, it offers a beautiful overlook.
It's in the middle of the national forest.
Well, why is it there? It's, it reads like, you know, a tourism guide to Bonner County in many ways.
In the gist of a comp plan, it implies, now do something about it, project it, true land use regulation.
But it also talks about cemeteries and whatnot in here, and I think that's good. But it also talks about cemeteries and whatnot in here, and I think that's good to take a reference. That you need to be mindful in land use that there's. Probably sites around here.
Sure, exactly.
Sites that have been lost or, or near lost and cannot be lost because they're in this document.
I was about to say, this thing get rid of the whole thing. I think, I think we need to pare it down to what's really important.
I think so. He's the property that comes in next to the Seniaku Tean Cemetery. There needs to be some acknowledgement of that to say, no, you've gotta have a buffer or something. That's, that's the gist of it, here's a special site. How is it, how is it viewed relative to a land use application, piece of property in proximity of that special site?
You know, being of Italian ancestry as well, I don't know that it's necessary to talk about Italian settlements and the labors. That they did with Great Northern and all the other cultural references here. So I think Dave's suggestion that this could be pared down into. Relevant information could be a good suggestion.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, you have, you have to remember how we got here. Well, this was assigned to a commissioner and. He didn't do it. The last meeting, I think you were there, he said, well. It looks like not a whole lot's changed, so let's just start with what's already there. And if somebody wants to take this on and pare this down, that would be great.
I got a real sharp scalpel.
Somebody besides you.
Yeah, somebody besides you.
So if somebody wants to take this on, you know, I know that Commissioner Benner has, has had some problems getting health and other family issues that. Prevented him from being able to do this, and so this was his, and I think somebody else would take that on, it would be great. He also has natural resources.
Oh, I do?
What he does.
You do now.
Cause you didn't have any to accept it.
Sure.
Cause uh. Cause Wayne has that one too and he's got some.
Okay, so when does this need to be pared down by or what? When is natural resource?
Now, the date for that had already passed, so we kind of.
Well, we're.
They all have, haven't they? No, we're sliding. Yeah, we're sliding. That's okay.
Okay, you can advise me in the later day. Natural resources, I'll take this on.
Natural resources, yeah, no, is that what we're talking about? Yeah, natural resources pass, so I think what you, I think what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have you. At natural resources, tell us when you.
Okay.
Because I, you know, it's a pretty complex component. It may require a subdivision. It will require. And I, I, I mentioned before the, the standalone policy that the county has, it would be good to review that. I mean, they, the commission that put it together was pretty convinced that it should be adopted as the component in the conflict. There's reason, it had no, it had, it had no land use regulations at all.
There's some disagreement about that, but anyway.
Yeah. So, I would also suggest. I would suggest that you also look at the goals, objective policies.
Yeah, I agree with you. So I'll keep those in mind.
Later.
And Mike, have you been able to find the copies of the sub area committee plans? They're on the web.
I haven't done.
Okay, but they are on the web.
If you go to.
They're not?
It says con plans. And other, I think other documents.
No, I've, I've got two major things here to take care of, I'll take care of those first.
I'm just giving you a little other stuff to read.
Except, except that the, the premise of all of this is. To base what we write on those sub area plans. So I think you have to find them before you, before you get too far down the road.
This is our special areas.
Well, and Swatty also did that, Dave.
I don't think any of them.
Swatty also did that really good spreadsheet that compared all of them, I. I can't remember exactly where that's located.
It's on, it's on the comment drive. Would you bring up the county website again, the place that refers to the sub area plans? Cause I think one of them, it just has, it doesn't give you the plan. No, it does.
Free Slates is on there.
Well, hasn't been presented, but the document, I think it's free Slates.
I've found them all.
My work. Cause I tried to bring them all up the other day, one of them didn't seem to work. Yeah, so bring that up. And. You have to go back to the. One of the file.
No, I think it's on the website somewhere.
Click on one of those, any one of those areas, do you know which one it was you could find?
There it is, that's the one.
Final draft.
Final draft, okay, so final draft. Alright, there's the southwest.
I think they're all there.
Okay, let's see if they're all. Share, drive. Okay, alright, thanks, Jay.
For the sub area plans? I'm gonna suggest that we shouldn't be changing them.
No, no, it's just for me to read.
Okay, yeah, maybe I misinterpreted what you said. Okay.
You look at.
I heard that.
Go back to mission, expedition documents, planning. You'll see a file, it says CP seven original, do not modify. Click on that, you'll find it's got sub area plans. All we're doing is reading. This has all the, all five sub area plans.
We're just trying to show Mike all the stuff he needs to read.
We're good.
Okay, moving on. There's those sub area plans, Mike, you might wanna read them.
Alright, so is there any public comment on that?
The one thing I was gonna say is, with, with, is it Mike?
Yes, yes.
The document that Don was referring to, that. Natural resource was, it, it is actually document number, it's resolution number eighteen dash twenty nine. It is kinda difficult to find, but that's the number eighteen dash twenty nine.
Alright, so. We're gonna be revisiting that one.
In two weeks.
So now we'll go to those opponents that we haven't addressed yet. And as we're, this is not open to public comment, this is discussion. Discussion, the first one is hazardous areas.
Okay. I thought Jason had written this. Chad, okay, everybody knew before me, thank you very much.
Found out. Jason and Chad have a break. White.
Okay, moving on. When Chad wrote this, he really helped me out. And even though it says that Alan did the updates on this. Alan's just my secretary because I don't know how to cut, copy and paste and make things in red letters, so. Excuse me.
Go ahead. Sorry, miss.
So, um, I really liked everything that Chad had written, except I wanted to add. What is added in red? With, with faction or however you say it, I, that came out of the original hazardous areas. Component. Yeah, I probably should have gotten my secretary to make that a little more clear. But anyway, and then the other, and so that's where I took that from.
At a risk here in Bonner County?
Yes.
Really? You can see.
I thought.
From all that.
Read it, it's, it, it's got a lot of really relevant stuff. And then the other one that I did not move over. And I tried to call Jason today because none of you told me that it was Chad who wrote it, so. Yeah, he's G I S. See, I knew that and you didn't. Okay, um, there is. Uh, you have to go back to the original component. And it's, it talks about flood plain, it talks about FEMA. This one talks about flood plains and the FEMA maps. And the zones, but there was a section in the old component that I was thinking of adding. And since I couldn't get feedback from Chad, I was gonna ask you people, so you'd have to go back to the. Old component, which is on here too, and I can take you right to where. It's after five, it's five point four. And I don't know if, I, I couldn't decide if it was redundant with what's in the, the modified chapter. Or if it was something that we didn't wanna see because it was too specific. Um, I think it is, I looked at it. It's, it's in the old component, the original component. I'm sorry, I should have pulled this up and known exactly what page it was on, I just went five point four. Okay. Flood, flood damage prevention. Those few paragraphs there, I didn't know if that was something we wanted to put in. The first paragraph worried me a little bit, but then, but then after that, I kinda liked it. And thought about, then it should go in the chapter, so I'm open. You guys wanna look at that, I'm open to your suggestions. Is everybody finding it?
Wasn't that it on the board right there?
Oh, I wasn't, I can't see the board, so I'm just looking on my computer, it's five point four and it says flood damage prevention. Flood plan development standards.
Yeah, that's what's up on the screen, so.
Okay.
But which paragraph?
I was, I was considering all three of them, I, the first one. I, 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 I didn't add it because I wasn't sure.
Well, I think in some respects it deals with the national budget.
Is, so is it redundant to what Chad wrote? If I felt real strongly about it, I would have put it in.
What are you suggesting to do with these three paragraphs?
I didn't know if I wanted to add them to my edited component. Where I added. About the, the. What I added in the red to the component, I didn't know if I wanted to add this section to. Or if it's already addressed enough with the FEMA references in.
Well, I don't think it needs to be in. Yeah, because. So the paragraph above what's on the screen now. One that talks about how many policies there are and how many, that's outdated, obviously. Or could be updated as of nineteen ninety seven, well. And the fact that there's nationally, there's nineteen thousand forty communities participating.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's right.
Okay, then forget I suggested it.
I think the second, that second paragraph is. If, if. It's, if anything. In the, in Chad's write-up. It certainly could make mention of title fourteen. And it doesn't. I just love C F Rs and everything, but it doesn't. Doesn't talk about title fourteen, I don't think. No, but he does, he's describing basically the same thing, right? Cause that, that first paragraph. Let's see if our references. No, that first paragraph in the old text. Page up a little bit.
That starts implementation?
Yeah. Who's running the screen? Okay, implementation, that is a good paragraph to me. But. That the rest of the programs have also been instituted for the acquisition of land and so forth, that's irrelevant.
Well, if we did add that first.
The first three sentences.
If we did, I, I was hesitant about having the term building codes in there, we don't have a building department.
Right.
And it's, it's really only that one sentence that starts with programs that.
Yeah.
Doesn't really make sense. The next sentence is fine.
That starts with what, Dave?
This, this sentence starts with programs have also been instituted is.
It's got, that's not, there's no regulations gonna do that.
Right. But, but the next sentence about measures for reducing flood damages include.
Which parallels or kinda ties into the second sentence zoning subdivision standard. You know, if you read, if you read what.
Oh, programs.
Really what staff wrote. It has, I think it really does cover that. And it, it does have a reference that Dan, uh, Don to CFR title forty four. Right. Which covers the whole Bailey way. But I, I liked it because like Dave said, it, it talks about certain measures. Here's the things that, that can be done to reduce the risk, zoning subdivision standards, building, okay, building codes. Special codes can be used to establish or in Bonner County's case, title fourteen. That can be added very cleanly.
And not, but not building code.
Yeah, take, I mean, modify the sentence to make it fit, but that's a good place to insert county code under title fourteen addresses this.
Anybody else have a strong thought about that? I think you'd put it with the, with the FEMA information in the other one.
Under, yeah.
Wouldn't you?
Either. Maybe as a lead in? Cause FEMA's mentioned in the, FEMA maps and then the paragraph before that talks all about FEMA and CFR forty four and so forth. And then after that one, it'd be a good. A good place to. Cause it says here Chad sends a paragraph before maps, says any developed proposed in the FEMA designated flood, special flood hazard area. So then that could be a lead in, the next paragraph could say implementation of construction design standards.
Yeah, so you're just saying take the first two sentences and stop where it says programs?
Well.
Programs have been instituted for the acquisition of.
Take that sentence out.
I don't like this.
And take out the, take out building codes.
Yeah, so let's just take those first two sentences. Delete building codes.
You just have to deal with climate change or brought climate change, there is not any of that in this document. And it, and you're making a fatal mistake to the county, you're doing incredible disservice to the county residents by not, not addressing. Climate change. And I, I, it's just mind boggling.
Um, and so. So we're taking those first two sentences, Swatty, and, but we're getting rid of the term building codes. And moving those over.
Okay, any other comments?
That's all I have on that one.
Before FEMA maps. Yeah, where do you wanna move to?
Before it starts talking about the different zones.
Yeah, that's it. So. Yeah, cause then the zone, zone A.
Yeah.
Could we say, cause now it says. Zoning subdivision standards and other special codes. Zoning subdivision standards and other special codes, either such as Bonner County Revised Code Title fourteen. Or just say. Eliminate that part of the sentence, say, this is, this is codified in Title fourteen of Bonner County Revised Code. As codified. Cause that's what at present and will, even if that gets modified, that's what's going to regulate. Yeah, I mean, so maybe just leaving it special code, cause that's what it is. It's beyond Title twelve, it's now Title fourteen. Yeah, okay. So in the, um. In staff revision, it's done by Chad, I guess. There's a couple of spots where. There's a place for a map. You know what was supposed to be in there, Swatty? They were in his original work, but I think. It's in there, it's at least in there a couple of times.
Right.
So we need to, we need to find out what was supposed to be in there.
There's, there's also an, an error in two point one. I don't know what the right answer is, but. When it talks about the faults. Uh, it identifies two faults, the, the Purcell Trench and the Hope Fault. And then it says the Hope Fault runs approximately eighty miles laterally from northeastern Washington State through Bonner County and into northwestern Montana. Whereas the Hope Fault intersects the Purcell Trench near the city of Sandpoint, et cetera, et cetera. So one of those is misnamed, I, I don't, I don't know which one. No. That's, well, it, it talks about two faults and then two different ones, but then names only one. So one of those is supposed to be Purcell Trench. You could probably figure it out if you looked at the fault map. Which I didn't, I didn't have time to.
Northwest to southeast.
Yeah, staff could do that, or, yeah.
Six to hope. You fix that, Swatty?
I think that mattered, he did include it.
I know where the Purcell Trench is, I'm not really sure.
Above that, there it is. Any other, um, any other suggestions, comments with regard to hazardous areas? They're everywhere. But I think you're not taking comments on these right now. Alright, so.
Next meeting.
Yeah, so. Just to be, the idea was to get a draft first that we worked on and give you guys something to comment on.
That, there you go. Well, I thought was regarding to those building codes by taking that out, even though we don't have VAR kind of going, we still have, uh, UBC, UBC, uniform building code in. So when we're going in and dealing with FEMA and building and construction and things like those areas, uh, being a fire, ex-fire commissioner. Still had to abide by UBC, now Bonner County did have building code, if they had a certain. Fourplex or nineplex or something like that. We have, still had to follow UBC as far as the fire end of it. I don't know if they cross over as well as for FEMA, so I don't.
County never adopted the UBC.
That's badly. Idaho's different jurisdictions have to, have to adopt it. Idaho State did.
Across the whole state, across the whole state. Right, my understanding, you have to meet those codes.
Yeah, there's certain federal laws that Bonner County has to abide by. But it's a, it's a state.
It's a state law. I've always been told that, you have to, you know.
All I know is when I was. City government, um, we had adopted. It hasn't changed though. Electrical, whatever, that was building, plumbing. I don't act, I don't know, but I don't think so.
But I think, I think Idaho requires everybody in the state. To abide by UBC with respect, at least to electrical and plumbing.
Right, I think that's right, right.
Yeah.
I, I don't know about any.
County doesn't have it. You still, there's, there's only.
Right.
Right, right. Now whether that, whether that's germane in the, in the discussion about FEMA and flood risk, I, I don't know.
Electrical, L and I? Electrical?
Yeah, yeah, electrical and also plumbing, you still have to have those.
Still have to have state inspection. Yeah, that's the thing. The, the rest of UBC deals with structure and everything, there is no state inspection. There is for electrical plumbing. Right. So that's, that's the connection.
That's, that's correct.
Alright, so.
Do we end up putting that sentence in, cause I'm not seeing it on my screen, did it change on?
We've got it, it's, it's right, yeah. It's right above. There we go, right there. So should that be in?
Right where?
Oh, there, could that be in red? Let me just have it stand out that it's a change.
Yeah.
Well, that's true, that's true, we modified, Chad's modified. How would we denote that we've added this paragraph for discussion purposes in a workshop? Can we, can this?
Well, they would just be looking at the whole component.
Okay, so just.
Yeah, it just for my.
In this case, right, it's all new, like. Yes, we just added this now, but this is what the public will see, is the entirety of a new. Hazardous areas. Alright, so can we set this for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Alright, well, let's do that.
Oh, I see.
Does this have?
We haven't, we haven't had the public.
We haven't had a workshop. Public comment. Alright, so the next area, we still have two that we haven't finalized, or at least. Have the draft that we're willing to put out. Discussion draft to the public, that's transportation and school facilities. Okay, I don't know if there's, uh.
What happened to transportation and?
That's what I have up, so we're gonna go to transportation.
Public airport.
Well. It's, it's. There are, there are comments, but I think Mike made comments, I made comments. Uh, are they, are they in the document that I submitted? There are comments on, in the margins. See, there's a margin area, but. Oh, I didn't go through it today.
Suggested update?
Yeah.
Okay, is that the one I'm looking at?
Wait, I don't, this is the. I'm just looking at.
Oh, make sure you're looking at the suggested.
Yeah.
You're looking at the.
I'm looking at the old. Everybody got it? Okay, so that's Mike's comment, I mean Alan's comment and then Mike's. Yeah, we can just go through them.
Alright.
So, my first comment was really almost more of a question than a comment, um, and. The setbacks and the street naming actually were set out. Prior, um. Text, my question was, should they be set out here? So Swatty, you mentioned that by leaving, by not naming. The specifics, it leaves room for things to move around, does that make, does that apply here as well? Well, but those are two, actually, when you look at the code. State code. These are two parts of this that are supposed to be covered. So I mean, if they, they, if we don't refer to the specific code section. Then we need to print out what they are.
Well, you, are you suggesting we identify specifically what our setback requirements are?
That's what's in the old.
That's it's really.
Existing component.
So that would mean anytime you change the code, you'd have to come back and change the comp plan?
I was just thinking.
It code in that area and with respect to setbacks.
Cause it went to detail.
Does that make sense?
Twenty-five. Code says. Well, well, we're on the right track with that. Yeah. I think mentioning it, but, but maybe a bit as Bonner County code. Can be found. Setbacks can. It's kind of an odd requirement of. Well, why don't we just change it, we'll take out, let's just take out.
Here's the, here's the, here's the out.
This component, transportation, may also make recommendations on the building line setbacks, control of access, street name number. And it's, it's cumbersome because it, it. The implication, this is transportation setback from a road. That portion of that component had backyard setbacks, side yard setbacks, separates from, you know, utility easements. Yeah, it has a lot in there.
Yeah, a whole bunch of stuff that just.
Alright, why don't we just do this, setbacks are covered in Bonner County code. Yeah, and the same with street, street naming numbering, yeah, we just take out the. Cause that was a huge effort, I mean, the nine, nine-one-one system came in and that dominated everything and it totally superseded what the comp. But then the next comment, or is Mike's, which I think is well-taken, but Mike, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so having been a former road builder and commissioner over a large road budget. In all due respect to county staff, I, I think this, this, uh, these kind of sentences are really, um. Not necessary, they're kind of big excuses for doing it the way we've always done it. I, I would say you can simply put up, uh, above where it's saying, um. Where it says added, adding designated shoulder pathways along current county roads very difficult due to top graphing narrow right. You could also, and budgeting issues. And leave it at that and not get into all this detail about justification, cause I can tell you as a road builder. Uh, maintenance is not the most effective way to solve problems. You keep putting a patch over a patch and reselling, you lose your entire road, so, so I take issue with the comments here. That's the cheapest way to go, and.
I think that's well-taken.
Well, you two are. So if you deleted those two sentences that Mike commented on. And the end of that paragraph read. Road and Bridge Department has been working with about two and a half million annually for infrastructure improvements historically. Well, I don't know.
I, I don't know if that's necessary.
Alright, so first place, this is direct comment out of the transportation plan of Bonner County. I copied that right out of the plan.
Oh, that's good.
So it's not, you know, let's not argue with the staff for saying that.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, take it out.
Yeah, and I was just saying. The transportation plan, rather than trying to define what's necessary for transportation system improvements in the comp plan. Bonner County has a transportation plan, that's what prevails.
That could change in, in a month.
Well, sure, but it still is going to be.
But this comp plan is supposed to last ten years, so I would do.
So just say. Bonner County. Has and will always have a transportation plan. That's how funding is achieved in the state of Idaho, you have a plan and you cite the plan to get.
So speaking about my specific comments, though, I don't know that taking those sentences out is contrary to your.
No, it, it doesn't, I, I'm, I'm trying to figure.
To me, I. Uh, and I, I would suggest if you were taking that out, because it's a, basically two or three sentences that are saying we don't have enough money.
Yep.
Not that I've never heard that before, but.
Who doesn't?
Uh, yeah. So you just say. Above where it's very difficult due to top graphing narrow rights right away off limits, sight distance, and budgetary constraints.
Budgetary constraints, right.
We're done.
Yeah. Okay, so they had, write that down? So you, you add, and, and, um, budgetary constraints. And period, and then everything from consequently to the end of the italic area is, is taken out?
I, I would take everything out, uh, app, uh, actually, I. Being as new to my editing skills, I would say the road and bridge department, everything below that could be taken out.
I, I, I would agree with that.
It's two and a half million, maybe this year or that year, but.
Yeah, but I think the statement about how many miles and traffic levels is fine.
Is, is pertinent, yes, I agree. And it also adds to the dilemmas.
What was the sentence that you wanted to add, Mike?
I do, I was just gonna add, uh, the three, three, I think it was three words, Biden here. Budgetary constraints.
Right.
That's only two words.
Correct. Budgetary constraints, where's that go? At the end of the sentence. And budgetary constraints, okay. I can't find. Consequently. Marked up. Oh, there it is. Now consequently is on the left, so right there where the cursor is. So it says, and. You can, you can take out the and, you say, narrow rights away, comma, often limited sight distance along roads, and. Or just leave the and in, yeah. And budgetary constraints after roads. That do it?
Yeah, you can take the and out, the first and out.
Yeah. You could do that. That'll make it. Read a little better. So, and, before. Yeah, after rights away and then comma, removing the and. Okay, so, boom, 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 right? Next comment. I think that, that sentence, that next sentence should be out too, there are very few of any, any customers. No? Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
The way of the railroads, they're not looking for a customer along the line. Union Pacific is doing more of that than rolling down, for sure. I don't know, maybe I'll put a high-speed rail in. Yeah, and if it does it, you will do it.
It's, um, I, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, it seems like, it doesn't seem like it's.
Yeah, it, it could go, that's. But the gist of it is. If private owners of industrial lands, if they want a spur, they contact the authority and, and they, they put them in. They pay for it, but that's how it works. Well, my second sentence, or my second comment, this sentence seems to be, is actually the, um. The last sentence of that paragraph, what did we just, uh? Yeah, I think, I think we.
Oh, okay.
We, yeah, right. Right.
We've already removed.
Yeah, that's, that's been dealt with. Okay, well, my next comment is, um. It's really a, um. Sort of a structure and philosophical comment, and that is. This is supposed to be written as, you know, a factual text. Which then goes into, you know, goals, objectives and policies. I don't think this can, I don't think a conclusion really necessary or, or appropriate. And that is your conclusion, not necessarily what my conclusion would be, but I don't think it's important whether there's a conclusion. It's a, these are the facts. Now we go and, and view the. Goals, policies, so on. Well, I, I think it's a conjunction, you know, there's facts, facts are facts, what do they mean?
No, but facts are facts, but conclusions are opinions.
Well, conclusions are drawn from the facts. If you're in charge of, of making up goals, a goal has to be based on, on a, a reason, not just a bunch of facts. There's, there's, uh. You know, there's six miles of road here and we've got utilities along it, you know, those are facts. Well, no other component except the two that you dealt with on have a conclusion. Good observation. I think they.
Neither have been, but, well, I mean, for many, many years. The way comprehensive plans have been.
Neither have been, but, well, I mean, for many, many years, the way comprehensive plans have been developed here and elsewhere, I've never seen a conclusion. I, I think it's in the wrong place.
Starting a new.
Then if I, then if I, if we go down to the goals, I, I don't think those, those are appropriate goals and policies. I mean, yeah, okay, we have to identify the, the impact, but the goal is not to identify the impact. The goal is to provide a transportation system that's safe and congested, well maintained, just like the goals we already passed. And how do you do that? You know, you go through the objectives and policies and part of that is, you know, is definitely, um, to get the impacts. But, but you then have to have a framework. That's what the comprehensive, comprehensive plan is supposed to do. It's supposed to give a framework for how decisions with regard to this transportation are going to be made. What considerations should go into it?
Okay, who's, who is, who do we turn to to get those, get that input? Highway agencies.
Exactly, and that's what, that's in our, that's in the current objectives that we, that we all agreed upon.
I admit I did not go back and look again at those goals and objectives that we walked through to see if this is already there or it conflicts with those or.
Doesn't conflict, it's just there.
Once we adopted, we're, are much more extensive. Which, okay, then I better go back and look at those real quickly.
I mean, this is what, you know, we're supposed to do this analysis essentially when we were going through the goals, but.
Yes. So the ones that, the components that I reviewed, I'd wanted to make sure that not back engineering it to make the text of the component meet the goals that we looked at four months ago. I was looking to see if there was any conclusion drawn from the facts of the case that led to different goals or policies, so.
I don't think there's anything in the text you've written before you get to the conclusion that contradicts any of the goals, objectives and policies that were previously thought that.
Well, that's current, but I'm looking for the, our, our poll, our goals and policy document. That must be from the eighteen.
Oh, that's.
No, it's just, that's just.
We also decided early in this process not to restate goals, objectives and policies in the text. We had a specific, because I did that, I did include it, and we decided to eliminate it. Now we're, you know, consistent with that decision.
You're looking for it?
Yeah.
CP seven? You know, original, do not modify? All right, where's that? That must be.
It's under.
Landing commission.
Yep, yep.
Oh, here they are in printed out form. Okay. Who's the, who's the? Who's that we looked over?
Didn't just look over, we recommended it to be adopted.
We adopted them.
By, by the county commissioners, you know. I mean, I, yeah, it's, it sort of puzzles me that we've spent months going over these and now you come up with something that's totally inadequate. At least in my opinion. Again, I don't think, I said it, but I don't think the conclusion is appropriate.
Well.
Anyone?
Well, I'm just looking through them real quick because I haven't looked at them for a while. I, I'm trying to see if there's anything that we had that doesn't follow somewhat reasonably from what Don has written. I'm not finding anything.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the constraints about, the financial budgetary constraints, because that's where we use, that the county lives under is good justification for a lot of these objectives that have to do with not adversely impacting the existing system and ensuring that, um, new developments, you know, kind of cover the costs for any improvements or expansion of the transportation system that are required to support them, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I know, I think.
So I think that a lot of time.
Yeah, no, I, but I, first of all, I agree completely that these are the right goals and objectives and policies, and that's what we have. And, and we also agree that we're not going to restate them at any point because, again, now you have them in two places and it just creates a maintenance problem in the long run. I think, I think I was one of the ones who argued vociferously for that approach.
Right.
Um, so I agree with that. So then the real question though is, does the draft, as it's written, support the derivation, if you will, of these goals, objectives and policies? Because that's what it should do.
Right.
If we were doing this, yeah, I think it does too.
So if we remove from my suggested update, the stated goal and policy? And in conclusion.
Oh, oh.
But it's just not consistent within.
Yeah, true.
Want to go back and write a conclusion for all the others?
No.
Okay, then I guess we're taking it down.
I think it's a good statement in, in a, in a general way, but not specifically in this.
Yeah, I was just thinking that actually. If you said, instead of in conclusion, you said land development actions that result in, in additional traffic generation impact to the public road system, or land, well, that. That's not a, that's not a full thought, actually.
Yeah, right. Could you move it up?
Land development actions that result in additional traffic impact. Impact, oops.
It looks like I missed a word.
It is. Land development actions that result in additional traffic generation impact. Or generation, comma, impact the public road system in Bonner County. People argue, no, you shouldn't put a comma there. Well, it feels like it should be. Yeah, I mean, forget about the in conclusion, just say land, capital L.
Well, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't put this, as with many other topics covered in various components, uh, this, this is a transportation component, so let's stick to that. It doesn't, you know, that's again, your opinion, and, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be in there.
Well, um, Bonner County, Bonner County relies on agencies with expertise related to the topics to determine impacts and appropriate mitigation measures.
You know, you, you did the same thing with schools, and we'll get into that, but, you know, essentially what it appears to me is that, you know, we're saying, okay, let's just go to the experts and the experts will tell us what to do. Well, that's not what, that's not what governing bodies do. That's not what policy makers do. Be you away, the experts, just like you do in a courtroom and decide whether or not that's the way to go. It's not, you know, they don't dictate. Uh, like the schools don't dictate land use, neither does, you know, somebody in the road and bridge department. No, they're not, it's not dictating the land use. It's commenting land use application. How will this affect what you provide? That's what, that's what's required. So I, I still don't think that you just take the expert's word and then, you know, okay, bar the door. There's some other considerations.
All right, so George Garrett comes in here and says, you haven't described what habitat is. Bonner County, get on the stick. You're supposed to do it. We say, that's not our bailiwick. You go to the Department of Fish and Game and they tell us what it is. We're relying.
That, that exactly.
That exactly. It's not just George. I mean, we had, you know, in the last seven years, eight years that I've been on the commission, so many times, the public will say, you sent a request to Department of Lands, they didn't respond. That, you're, it's wrong. You should be figuring that out, Bonner County, come on. We say, we have to rely on the experts in the field. We have to. They are subject matter experts. We are not. The staff isn't. We don't have a biologist on the staff. We don't have a, 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 a land use, I mean, a, uh, we don't have subject matter experts in that sense on the staff. We have plans. We're a broadbagger.
But ju, but just to clarify, are we talking about allowing them the opportunity to weigh in or to have the opportunity to make a final decision?
That's a, that's a bigger, deeper question for.
Well, that's, no, the way they said it, the way it's written here, they make the final decision.
Exactly.
Because I'm on board with getting, gathering as much information as possible, but the decision makers were called to make the decision.
Okay, so, so what if we say?
I'm just taking that paragraph. Send, send. Can you put that land development actions, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, so, so one of the, one of the arguments for that is there's nothing in the policies and so forth that we talked about before that reference subject matter experts.
Oh, is it?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Well, that's out of our jurisdiction, but we care.
Well, no, because what it is, I don't remember seeing it specifically. It may say something about, no, I don't, I don't remember seeing it. There's a long-term change.
Well, it, I don't think it does. What it does reference i- in several places is that we want roads to be developed
Sure.
to county standards, which sort of is
Yeah.
an, an, an allusion to theoretically some expert, I think, weighed in on those county standards, they really expect.
Does this county, does this county have a county road engineer?
There, yes.
Well, then that's your expert.
They're, they're also, I mean, the theme of this, if I look, kind of step back and look at the goals and objectives that we wrote, one of the major themes is that, that we don't want new development to adversely impact the existing transportation infrastructure. So we say that in so many words, and then we also say a lot of things about wanting to see developers mitigate those impacts to the extent they're going to occur. Now, you may need, along the way, you may need to turn to an expert to say, okay, if we build fifty homes over here, what's the impact of that going to be? And how would you suggest we mitigate it? But.
Yeah.
But I, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm coming up to is I feel like that whole theme could be better developed in the text to better support the goals and objectives and policies that we have. Um, and I don't know, I didn't, I didn't specifically go back and look at the subarea plans to see what they all said about transportation.
Well, I, I, that's what is better.
Because, because in general, to me, that's a bit of analysis. At least the way I'm thinking of writing the two components I'm writing is the others for ag, for example, there's some facts and data about ag, how many farms do we have, et cetera, et cetera, but I'm also going to go look to the subarea plan to say, what the, is it sixty people in the community who, who talked about what they wanted to see for ag in the future in Bonner County? What did they say? That's part of the analysis. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering if there's information in the subarea plans that basically talk of, that, that lead us to these objectives. I mean, we came to these objectives somehow, and I suspect it's because some subarea plans talked about them. They said they didn't, they didn't want.
I think they did.
Only one, a number of different plans. Only one subarea plan talked about transportation, I would say.
Who did the transportation goals and objectives and policies?
Uh, but Don didn't do them.
The goals, objectives and policies?
And they've also come from what was there before.
No. I mean, some of mine are. There's a lot of line throughs.
Yeah, well, those are ones that were there from the old one. The ones that are in the light type are, were added. The rest of them, I'm pretty sure came from came right out of the existing.
As far as process here, if I recall, when we started back in April, we were going to review the goal policies and objectives, make the update, as we did. Review the components whatever fashion, right? Make the updates and then go back to the goal policies and objectives, review them again to see if there's anything else we have. Rather than changing the content of the component to match what we recently adopted, like, it's to go back directly. That was, that was.
That was not my understanding.
I think there is maybe some confusion on that.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I see we're going.
Just described, to me, would be, make what we did, wasted time. Well, and that was.
I don't even, and I don't even know how we could do that, Jake. But haven't we already submitted the goals, objectives and policies?
You could, you could propose.
So we can attend them.
I, I think one of the key tasks that we were given was to, that, that was missing a little bit in your description, Jake, is to review the subarea plans and the existing comp plan, and based on that review, develop a new set of goals, policies and objectives, or goals, objectives and policies for each element. So we came up with these goals, objectives and policies somehow based on looking at the combination of five subarea plans and the current comp plan, so that, that background has got to be out there somewhere, I suspect. Again, I haven't recently looked at them from this particular context. And I think it should be developed in the text as a, as a foundation for, this is why we established these goals and, and effective policies.
I thought the text is a result of your goals, objectives.
No, it's, it's the other, the other way we're doing it, the way we're doing it, but it's, it's.
We've reviewed the facts, therefore, here's goals and policies. So, you know, it's all, it's a.
You can look at it either way. Many times you start out with a goal finding exercise, then you, then you implement it. To establish those goals. But nevertheless, I mean, this, this paragraph may be that we will need to go back and look at, at the subarea plans to satisfy ourselves that, well, there are objectives and policies that we, uh, we've already, uh, recommended still, still work. Maybe we need to put in something about the subarea plans, but, um, I think that we probably should.
So just a suggestion for Don, in this paragraph above that, that starts with, of the five comp plan subarea committees, only three included any goals related to transportation. You go on to say, the suggested transportation goals in Sully, Samuels and Southwest Bonner can be adequately met by routing lane use action proposals to the appropriate highway agency. I, I don't think that's what we should be talking about here. What we should be talking about here is what were those goals and objectives and policies in the subarea plans that did establish them? And then are those, in fact, hopefully, those should form the basis or the foundation for the goals and objectives and policies that we wrote.
All right.
A couple of months ago.
Which I didn't do. I mean, I, I read through them and that was my quick conclusion. You look at it right there. On the left is Southwest County, and they just talk about the, the, uh, survey that they sent out.
Yep, yep.
Transportation under Sully was that on the, on the right. You know, it just, it didn't lead anywhere. I don't know that. It talks about road standards and Title II. Private road standards and everything, so it, it didn't, didn't come up with anything new that I saw.
Well, and, and again, I, in context, to me, you know, this is an update, so it's always fair to go back to the old comp plan. And if, if people haven't developed any, you know, new burning issues that they feel like need to be addressed in the update, then so be it. Maybe the old, maybe the old, maybe the old comp plan still applies to a large extent.
Yeah, and, and for the most part, the old comp plan, transportation component is again, pretty generic. It, it goes way beyond. It tells how wide the roads are, all that good stuff, but, but it's, it's, um, Is again, pretty generic. It, it goes way beyond. It tells how wide the roads are, all that good stuff, but, but it's, it's, um. The conclusions, if you will, that come from that, pretty much don't impact the roads. The big issue that the public raised. And I don't remember seeing it in Sagel, but over and over and over again. We he- hear from the public about uncongested roads. And there's no, no, um. Locally accepted standard for what uncongested is or congested in that sense. Look engineering wise, it's, it would blow people out of the water if they saw what that was. Right. See, so it's very, very subjective. And I've searched and searched the data to see if there's some reasonable definition of capacity for local roads.
Your, uh, road engineer doesn't cover?
For local roads. Seventeen hundred vehicles per lane per hour. People don't accept that. Three more houses on the road, that's too much, too much. Don't, don't allow it. Congested roads. I can't sit in the middle, my dog can't lay in the middle of the road at twelve, two in the afternoon and take a nap. That's too congested.
So what, what do we do with the last paragraph?
Go on, is it not?
Conclusion?
That last sentence probably could be up in the, I mean, that one sentence that's kept. Go up into the text up above. Eliminate the rest. The one that talks about highway agencies?
Well, to me, to me, the way, the way I think this should read is, I think first. We have to. Build the background for why we said all these things about not adversely impacting the existing transportation infrastructure. And if there is new development that is going to have a significant impact, we want that to be covered by the new development. All, all those objectives that we have here, develop the background for that. And then, uh, to me. The, the, the turning to the experts to understand the details of the impact and what the. Potential mitigation approaches might be, is sort of an outcome of that. It's almost in how are you going to implement that?
That's an implementation.
Right. But, but we haven't developed the background for all of our objectives. And I, and I hope it's in the subarea plans and/or the.
Not only did we get. Information from the subarea plans, we had many number of workshops and public comments that were. And we got a lot of information, a lot of, uh, suggestions from those. So I think some of these. Came out of that. So it's not just, um, subarea.
I, I do agree with what Dave said earlier. If, if they weren't burning issues, or if no one made comments. About the previous comp plan. Then, then you have to assume that it's okay and that it should stay there and not be trying to rewrite it.
They don't have to rewrite it just to rewrite it.
Right.
Alright, so, what do we want to do? Uh, Don, you want to go take another crack at this, or? I, I would like to. I've listened to what y'all saying. Let's do that. Alright, let me do that. So, let's move to. We're done with that for the time being. Move to schools.
So we're not moving this one to public commentings then?
No, no.
I was suggesting this right back, and I thought we discussed that.
Yeah.
And what is, what's the conclusion of through?
I thought we were going to strike it.
Okay. I think the next sentence actually covers.
Says what they do what they want to.
Right, right.
Alright, so we are.
Now you share just one quick thought. Dave, Dave mentioned that, um. Impacts and development. Addressed by maybe the development. And I see that across the county, there's a lot of areas where that could happen. But I think there's a greater number of areas where, look at Sully Valley, South Sagel, where there are. Already existing parcels that are already, by right. Uh, BLP for house, put a house and add traffic to those roads. And so it occurred to me is that reading through this. A lot of the, the impact to those roads are not. Typical fashion like, hey, there's a new subdivision, that developer needs to build new roads, and by the way, the road to that subdivision needs to. So, if you're writing some of that. We talked about highway and some of that stuff, but.
Well, okay. Alright, so. Any other comments on this, or can we move to schools? Which one?
No.
No. Well, that'll be another discussion item. I mean, we're obviously backing up, but.
Someone's going to take it out behind you. Take it out until it's ready.
We want to have, you know, a product that we, we, most of us agree on.
And, and to be clear, as I go back, and we actually did never say that. I think we talked about, talking about developers to address those impacts. It was really nothing in here. It just says, future development, must not adversely impacting.
Still, build the case. Then a goal, pick up on the case. Alright, uh, so let's move to schools. Facilities and transportation. Mike has a number of comments. I had a number of comments as well. My comments are going to be very similar to what we just last, we just discussed, but. Let's go down in order. Uh, so Mike, you've got some comments there.
As such. Is that where we are?
Alright, and I think the suggestion there was to strike that sentence, which I think is probably appropriate.
Well, uh. I think there is a way of knowing charter schools. I don't know how charter schools. Seem to me that, again, not knowing. Perhaps the depth or history that I need to have, that charter schools are somehow treated special or exempt.
Well, number one, this is a school facility and school transportation component.
Right.
School facility. The charter school at this point has its facility within the same, within the city of sample.
But in the future, it may not.
Highly unlikely.
Okay, but so, uh, why do we even need to address it in here then? Why does it even need to be in there?
Because it was in the existing.
Well, okay, so I'm. Just seen it doesn't need to be in there.
Yeah, it, it may not. I mean, that was part of my argument before. Why address anything that's housed physically existing within a city? When the, the county, I'm making the point that the county really doesn't have any jurisdiction over that site, facility. So it, it just, in mentioning it, it could be truncated down to, there's no, have no jurisdiction.
I, I guess the, 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 what struck me on this or got me going down this path was. That, that these, uh, private schools are privately funded. And I don't know how therefore, if that's justification, they can be excluded. Would not be included in any kind of code land use regulation. I don't, how they're funded doesn't really matter. I mean, a private developer. You, you don't care how he, he funds it, but you still, he still has to buy by the codes. I just don't know why it's in there. And if you want to leave it in, fine, I, you know.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's a good point. I think, I think it should, should not. Just ignore, you know, private charter schools, especially charter schools. Cause I mean, there could be a movement, in fact, there is a movement. Publicly run charter schools. Funding goes with the student, not the, not the.
Yeah. And right now.
I think that may be where, where Idaho goes.
Yeah, there isn't.
So. Certainly other states have done that. Okay, so. First sentence just reiterates sixty-five oh eight. Because it, it talks, the component in the state code specifically says public schools.
Yeah.
So I mentioned the fact that Forestburg Charter School is a public school. But it's not like the other public schools in the system where wherever you are is what school you attend. Parents have to choose to enroll their children in the charter school.
Oh, what?
Okay, that's just up there.
Well, so that's why I put in and. Rather than but.
Oh, you added it. Yeah, okay. Um, I'm trying to make the point. If we're looking at a development's impact on public schools. It's the old argument, well, I don't send my kids there. Why should I have to, part of, and why should mitigation, why should I have to mitigate any impact on that one? I don't even.
Cause you're part of the community.
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing. It's, it's, I don't even have any kids in the school. Why should I pay school tax?
Yeah, why am I paying?
Yep, um, so, but, at this point, and, and further. Oh, this is.
So anyway, those are my two comments. Change the but to and, and write the last.
I mean, I can't, I still can't see any incident, incidents where. The county co-regulation would say something relative to the charter school. Well, I just wanted to make that statement in case somebody comes up and says, well, how come you haven't addressed the impact on Forestburg Charter School? There isn't any. It's, it's.
They take care of it themselves.
Right, but it's part of the public system. So, the code says, address public school facilities. It is a public school facility. But there's no impact because of its special nature. Maybe we should put, include that under special sites.
You know, I'm okay with whatever it wants to do.
Well, and I, that's, that's, that's my, that's my argument. That's why I included it that way. So if, if y'all don't think it's worth writing, then you can take it out. Yeah, that's. One against, one neutral. What about the other three?
Well, you're talking about the first of the two sentences.
Yeah.
What about the second? I mean. The, the second sentence is kind of clear. It's a statement of fact, and it is, to some extent, it's germane here in this, in this area because we have one of those schools.
Yeah.
I might strike one sentence, only one sentence in.
And the way I said it, I hope, okay, I, I must, I must divulge. Here's something that I've always struggled with, with my writing of any techno or anything. The further I go in the paragraph, it's backwards. It's developed backwards. I get the stronger statements at the end than I do it to me. Because I'm, my brain is thinking about it and then I come up with a, a stronger statement.
Alright, so eliminate the first sentence.
There you go.
Strike as such.
Yep, there it is.
And change the but and.
Yeah. Alright, the next, I think the next comment is mine. Flies in several places. Right now. It is up to the district to determine if land use actions, including building permit subdivisions or changes, blah, blah, blah. Create sufficient impact to the schools' facilities to more litigation. My comment was, again, it's sort of in the same, you know, expert thing. And my comment is, it's up to the districts to provide information, not from county representatives. So if he's. Okay, so tho- those, all of those comments are well taken because it should say. Suggested, suggested mitigation. And that's what they do. You know, AM is going to say. We recommend that the county impose this condition. That's up to us. So, we can modify that to say, and it would be the same under transportation as well. They're going to suggest a mitigation. They're going to, they're going to say whether or not they accounted as impact, because you don't want to be responsible for that. The level of impact.
Has the school district ever recommended any mitigation measure?
I, I asked. I asked. Administrative personnel that. And no. I've also asked Claire Miley and, um, uh, Brian Quayle, past planning directors about that. Answers, no. The closest, and I alluded to it in, in here, the closest it has ever come. At Clagstone Meadows, some nine hundred homes added to Bonner County, in the south part of the county. Their mitigation for school impact was to donate a piece of ground for a, 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 a school complex. The same was going to happen with, with, uh. The one over in Blanchard, the golf course. They were in the process of doing that, and then everything changed. So those are the closest because that's what it takes. It takes a, uh, nine hundred lot subdivision, two thousand lot subdivision, many, many hundreds of acres. The two lot short flat for the, even the fifteen lot flat just does not raise to the level of impact that's discerned.
May, maybe, maybe not, Don. I mean, you, like you've said in here, in the text. Uh, some of these schools are very, very close to capacity.
Correct.
So, you know, maybe there is something that, you know, that could, that could be done. I don't know. And it's not up to us to decide that, but if, if the point of my comment is that it's, it's just up to the district to provide information. And not, and not, so they don't decide anything.
No, let's find the words then to say that.
I think you need to break those sentences apart into, in each of those cases where they occur. I know it's one sentence here, into two, because it's two thoughts, kind of.
The last sentence, it is up to.
Yeah, the one thought is, the district's got to tell us.
Okay.
Identify what they think the impact is. They may suggest mitigation measures, but it's up to the county to decide what to do. It's two thoughts.
So. I just said it a little more briefly.
Yeah.
You wanted to say, say that again, Dave, and then?
Well, I would say, it's up to the, using. It's up to the district to identify whether land use actions. Uh, impact school facilities. Or maybe even identify the impact of land use actions on school facilities. And you could say, suggest possible mitigation measures.
And then it's.
Off your way, that's exactly what the.
And it's up to, but, it's up, well, but the warrant, the problem is that warranting mitigation.
Yeah, it's pretty strong.
That kind of brings in, somebody's decided that you got to have mitigation, and, and that's not the, the school district, that's the county.
Alright, so if we say. It is up to the district to, uh, I used the word determine, which is, I think, what you were saying, but what?
I would say identify.
Identify.
The impact.
If, if land use.
Of land use actions. Of land use actions on school facilities.
We are to identify, in this one, yeah, to identify the impact of land use actions on school facilities and suggest possible mitigation. Okay. And then the rest of that sentence can, now, here was the thing too, because we've had so many discussions about add zone change. You need to know what the, what the, what the impact is, oh, add infinitum of possible development under that zone. That's, that's requested. Understand the argument, but it falls short because you don't know specifics. So you could come up with a litany of mitigation or of, of impact. And, and potential mitigation, so what?
You need to have, you need to have a proposal.
Yeah, and that's what we've always said, which just riles the public. Well, then how do you know that it's, it's correct to make that land use change, to make that zone change? You can never accomplish it in the end. You got to know something about the, the breadth and width of the resultant land use action following the zone change. That's more easy to do in a commercial to industrial or something along those lines, but well, like the, the Skinner's own change from ten to five. Everybody jumped on how many houses it was going to be and, you know, the maximum that could be in that area.
Right, well, we're not, we're not dealing with that. That does, like, an example, but.
All right, so there's, that had, that appears in three places. Yeah, I reiterated that sentence.
My, my, uh, comment, my next comment was, I mean, I understand the purpose of, uh, signing to the public public facilities, or just to show that, basically to say that impact fees are, are providers to schools. Why don't we just say that? Why do we have to quote the code section? I don't think anybody argues that that the schools can utilize impact fees. They can't, not, not under current law.
Right.
So why don't we just say, under current law, the current law, they can't, they can't utilize any of these. Eliminate the whole.
And so this is the one, and I also, I. Yeah, that, that whole section there, right. That was the preamble to saying, and eighty-two oh four says. But reciting what sixty-five oh eight says needs to be up in the preamble to the whole. In my view.
I'm sorry. You lost me.
Well, that, what's highlighted there on the screen? That was a background statement so that the, the following section eighty-two oh four about impact fees had, had relevance. But.
But, but, but I agree with Don. I don't think you need any of that. Don't cite the state code, just cite the conclusion. Think current state code does not permit impact fees for school facilities, period, over and out.
Which would be the sentence right after this, nineteen, nineteen ninety-two.
Uh, okay, we're up.
Yeah, yeah, I would say in nineteen ninety-two, the Idaho legislature, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
However, schools can.
Districts cannot utilize it.
Or you could even say, okay, now go down to, to eighty-two oh four. Oh, no, it's right there. All right, okay, I, I see, I see.
Like the conclusion, we don't, we don't, we don't need to cite all.
However, uh, school facilities are not listed as, uh, as a, as a, as a state on somewhere down below that.
Yeah. Don was getting paid by the word.
My wife was standing behind.
He done yet?
All right, so the next comment we have is Mike's. Take that on, Mike.
Have, you have no factual substantiation.
Such small land use section.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I don't.
I, I think, I think you have to, you're, you've recognized you're dealing with a school district that has. I forget how many million, they claim, millions of dollars of deferred maintenance actions and.
Well, the key word there is deferred.
So, so the, the current tax base doesn't even pay for the schools, particularly what the school district does. So adding.
The tax base is not supposed to pay for it. That was an allowance made by the legislature some years ago, a whole century-long debate about the legislature funding schools. They keep making these little concessions. Oh, yeah, you can have property taxes. Oh, yeah, you can have this. Oh, yeah, you can have this.
Well, they got the endowment fees and they just, uh, passed a, right, law that's going to give them four hundred million dollars.
Well, I guess my, again, it was a.
They've already done it.
So my, 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 I guess what I'm arguing is that Don's statement should state.
Vice Republicans.
I don't see it hurting anyone.
Yeah.
And which sentence are we talking about?
Yeah, we're, we're starting in the bigger scheme of things here. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not going to lose sleep over it.
Cause this is, that's the whole gist of this thing was, it needs a big cooperative development to really.
Yeah, and that's unfortunate to, because every time you build a house, you're getting tax base implemented.
Yeah.
Even so small, but I'm, you know, I build a new house and pay more taxes. And that's not enough apparently.
No, well, like I, people used to come to our hearing and say, I pay my road taxes every year. I said, do you have your bill with you? Here it is. Oh, what'd you pay last year? Eighty-two dollars and fifty cents towards roads. Do you think you got your eighty-two dollars and fifty cents worth?
Yeah, well. I would put online and I'll read the comment.
All right, so I'll move on to my next comment, which again, this is a conclusion. And I think it's appropriate.
Before we get there, I do agree with Mike's comment that in the school transportation section, that second paragraph, we should state the year.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
As a, as a, as an example, in the LPUSD, twenty-twenty-two averaged.
Oh, oh, oh.
State the.
Five years from now.
Thank you. It's easier.
Where are the numbers?
Yeah.
Well, this year's average student ridership, so. The twenty-twenty-two year.
I, I said it's twenty-twenty-two.
Yes, it is.
Or whatever year.
Yeah, it's from this year. This is fresh off the, right off the, steps of the bus.
Strike this year's and twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, the year twenty-twenty-two's average. The average student ridership for twenty-twenty-two. To each of the following schools. So. So how about that?
That's fine.
You have to say in English. Yeah, that's a better placement of it.
All right, so now the next one is my comment, and that is, um, we no, we don't need it. We don't need the conclusion. It's just not a, I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, you, you could, you could add, you could add, you, you could not make this a conclusion, but you could put the last, uh, paragraph there, which I guess is all one word, one sentence, but in order for school district to be aware of potential needs of the transportation systems. Part of our minor developments in the coming on modern accounting, transmit land use proposals, request review, blah, blah, blah.
Which is one of our stated goals.
Right.
Or objective.
Right, so, yeah, so that's, that, that could stay. I just don't think it's appropriate to have a conclusion. We've kind of already had this discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Then, uh, again, I, I think the, these, the goals are, are, should be what we did before, because that's what I understood them to be. The, you know, identifying the impact, the goal is not to identify the impact of land proposals. The goal is, as we said previously, is to preserve the county's commitment, do an ability to provide quality education for future students of Bonner County. How do you do that? Well, you let the districts know what is going on in terms of proposed developments. And, you know, the other objectives and policies that we have here, I mean, it's, it gears into texts that Don's written, that, uh, these goals are the ones that we have, have, have discussed over time are the appropriate ones. How you do something is not a goal.
No, it's okay.
Need, uh, goals and policies that we adopted before Don here. Okay, so this is what we did before. And they, and they don't need to be repeated.
Well, in fact, we agreed we wouldn't, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so just to avoid repetition.
Like to kind of, very.
So we're going to take out, uh, the first paragraph? Take the second? Take out the goals and objectives?
Yeah, I think that, I think that would cover it.
Believe in the second. Does it need to have what we put in the transportation one about? Who's the school?
Uh, what's the name of it?
Schools transportation, basically. But just to say, you know, like we did with the transportation, talking about getting subject matter experts, uh, advice, recommendation on.
Well, that's a school district in this case, I think.
Right. So, but we don't have that same kind of wording.
Well, you don't need it because of this, because, whether they're experts or not.
Oh, you live near this guy? Oh, picked up on that one pretty quick. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to scratch the whole first paragraph there.
Yes. We're going to leave this, we're going to leave this. And we're getting rid of goals and objectives. As previously mentioned.
Okay, I got, I've got something else I'd like to mention.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, so we deleted the whole thing about the sub area? Where that just, what happened?
Come back.
I'm talking about SAGO?
Yeah.
Yes, uh.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, just everything went away and it moved the whole page up. Okay. So above what you just did, where it says sub area of area plans. Regarding school facilities, former planning and zoning commission formed five sub area committees to gather input for various areas. The recommendations of the five committees have not been incorporated in the comprehensive plan. Why not? I thought that's what we were doing. Are being considered as input when the comprehensive plan components are being updated. Isn't that what we're doing here?
Oh, yeah.
Why is that part of?
Saying, why are we saying what we're doing?
It should be, it should be incorporated.
I think that's a good comment. And first of all, I think the first couple of sentences there that talk about what the former P and Z commission did. I think is interesting, but that's interesting, probably an introductory section that describes the history of the process of how we did this whole thing. Not buried down here in the school section. Uh, and I agree with you that, that we, we are in this whole process incorporating the, the recommendations of the five sub.
Well, hey, so, so to me, this whole thing here about SAGO, that's great. But if I'd have been you, Don, I would have taken what you liked out of, out of the SAGO sub area plan. And I would have incorporated it into your text. I mean, what is, what is planning supposed to do with this?
Well, okay, good comment. Um, I'm struggling to find that section in my red. It's right above your conclusion.
It's right above what we just deleted.
Does this turn it down?
Wait, 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 hold here.
Starts with sub area plans regarding school facilities and transportation.
Okay, so it's after school transportation.
Right before, there we go, right before your conclusion.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, I, I was, I was, it was necessary to talk about the sub area.
No, it's not. It's.
Well, I, I think that's a fair thing. You can talk, in the analysis, I mean, remember, this is all analysis, right? You can talk about the five sub area plans and what they said about this particular topic. And, and what you're incorporating into.
Well, when I, when I incorporated stuff from the sub area plans into the recreation component, I didn't need to give them deep thorough credit.
I don't think you have to.
Well, that's why I'm.
But I, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's not allowed either.
Oh, yeah, I really don't think you should. I don't think, Hunter County is one county and one, one community, one broad community. You start breaking it out into segments, another segment, I'd say, well, I don't think that way.
See, when we ran it.
So if.
So take it out, I mean, take that reference out. I don't.
So that, that whole paragraph about how it's being considered to be incorporated, that's what we're supposed to be doing right now. So I think that whole paragraph needs to go. And then I think if there's any of the objectives and the goals from the SAGO policy that you want to incorporate into your component, I would do that. But I wouldn't list just the objectives and goals of the SAGO plan by themselves. I mean, I, I think there was some stuff on the schools in the Priest Lake plan, wasn't there? The SAGO was the only one that said anything about schools?
Well, it's a good comment.
My point being.
Put it in somewhere, but not.
Just incorporate the stuff from the plan that you want incorporated into the component.
Without identifying.
It doesn't need to identify SAGO. It doesn't, I mean, we're not analyzing anymore. We're writing these components.
Oh, we are.
These components are an analysis. Each component is an analysis of that particular topic.
Okay, I used the wrong word.
Better.
I, this way.
You know, I think, Don, if you look at this, um, you know, we used, like, the long-term consequence of land use proposal should be considered, including inadequacy of blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I, we, we did, we did incorporate some of these ideas, maybe not quite the way they're worded here, but you know, land use decisions in order to should not adversely affect schools and their ability, blah, blah, blah. I think that's almost word for word in our our goals, objectives and policies. I mean, I think you could probably take this and pull out, you know, what, what you think is good from this, uh, from this sub area plan and, and just refer to it as.
And incorporate it.
From a sub area plan. I know that.
Yeah.
There was a comment earlier about which sub area plans, but I don't think we have to identify them. To say that they came out of the sub area. Which it did.
And I would get rid of the chapter in front of objectives because it says the recommendations have not been incorporated. Well, that's what we should be doing here is incorporating them into the.
We're incorporating what we think is, is, is appropriate. Yeah.
Right.
But not lock, stock and barrel.
Correct.
All right. All right. Down with the death?
Yeah. Well, good progress.
All right, um, Don, uh, what would you like to do? You'd like to rewrite this a little bit and then, uh, reset a particular part? I think we actually kind of rewrote it. Bring it back or you think it's ready for, uh, public comment?
Uh, no, it's not ready for public comment. Cause we, I, I, I would like to go through, one, I'm, I'm pretty sure SAGO was the only one that had substantive comments on schools. But to eliminate SAGO and just say, community plans or whatever, you know, sub area plans. Somehow say that.
You're saying you want to leave SAGO specifically?
No, no.
It's just gonna be.
Okay. So take SAGO out.
Right, so why, why don't you do that, Don, and, um, let's try to get in both the transportation and, uh, and this one ready so when we review it at the next meeting, set it for another meeting.
Yeah, so.
What's today? Because, you know, we're getting backed up, so.
Yep.
So that, what our next meeting is the first November voice. Okay.
Gotcha.
I have a question, uh, which is not on this. I, I know that we do a lot of Zoom comments and stuff. We're heading into the winter and, um, Debbie and I have a pretty long drive. And it'll be first get nasty out there. Can we do this by Zoom or?
Yeah.
Have this us?
You're invited to every one of these by Zoom anyway. Are we still doing that? Inviting all of the commissioners by Zoom?
And so we don't send the invite out specifically unless we have to request any kind of.
I've been getting them every month.
Oh, you do?
You're, you're part of them. I don't think I got one the last two months, but before that, it was every meeting. You know, you're invited to be part of the, part of the game.
Well, it's, it's appreciated. I think it's if, if, if you're here, but if you haven't weathered, then obviously you got Zoom is the better.
Yeah, we had, we had one meeting last year where I was the only one in the room, with staff. Everybody else was sitting on Zoom going, what? I can't hear you.
I, I much prefer to be.
Yeah.
But you can't, you can't, if it's snowing outside. Coming down.
Yeah, there was a meeting here in last year. We, we didn't wanna push it. We ended up with this amount of people come on Zoom, so.
But you can still get a forum if there are people on Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
So.
You're in attendance.
One thing I would say, if you're not gonna be here, I think last time we did it, the chair wasn't here. He had the vice chair in to run the meeting, just to kind of be the guy in the room to.
That was Don in that one meeting when he was.
Right, sir. If you wanna do that, you can. If you wanna run it on Zoom.
I mean, you've already addressed it, Alan, I think, but I would just say that that was a particularly ineffective meeting. But it's only one person here and the rest of us on Zoom, and then some of the, some of the commissioners were having connectivity.
Three people in the audience, you know, I have, I've got a pretty good dialogue between the.
That being said, if, if you do end up dropping off, you just have to call me and I can give you my cell number or send you a text saying, hey, I, just so we can capture the note.
Yeah.
My time that we.
And that's what happened on that meeting. There's some people that. Okay, so, um, let's make sure we all.
Fourteen.
You have down Swati for?
Fifteen.
Public comment portion of the next agenda?
Yeah, so for public comments?
Which, didn't we, yeah, I thought we forwarded one of those to the public here. No, but I thought we, we were one of these. Yeah, I think so. But that's gonna be, that won't be on next agenda. That'll be set for public here.
Could we include that in the first hearing? Now, that's probably not.
No, no, you did not.
Okay. Right, okay.
So should we, maybe we should wait rather than have one component set for hearing?
Sure.
When are those hearings set for? The first ones?
It's November first.
Are we having hearings on the first?
We're having a hearing on the first, but I'm gonna have workshop. Yeah.
It'll be just like we did last time where we have a hearing upfront and they move into a workshop. So, and if it gets too late, we can.
Well, so I, I have a question then because about that agenda, cuz I'm on the hook for the two first-time reviews in two weeks. Um, and I need to ask you guys, what do you think the likelihood is of getting the, the economic development data?
Sure.
So. Anytime soon. I think, and maybe let me back up. Ag, I found some, the USDA does, uh, they call it an agriculture census. They do it every five years. The most recent one is twenty seventeen. I'm going ahead with that data cuz it's the most recent data I can get. There's, there should be another one soon, but I'm, I don't know when it's. You know, it's interesting because between twelve and seventeen, there were quite a few changes. If you look at some of it, I mean, it's interesting what's happened in, in the ag domain. We've had a lot more, we have a lot more farms, huge growth in the number of farms in Modern County in that five-year period. But they're, but they're all very small.
Oh, they're like hobby.
Yes. Um, so, you know, a lot of them are in the less than twenty-five hundred dollars a year sales category.
They make the exemption.
But it's interesting. I mean, it, it drives, I think, I'm, I'm thinking it will drive some of the themes we had of, you know, enabling farm stands and that kind of thing because I'm, I'm guessing that's how a lot of those smaller activities bring, get their products sold, farm stands and stuff. So it's very interesting. It just, it is already five years out of date, but that's what I'm running with, and I feel pretty confident I'll get a reasonable draft of that section done, but I don't have any economic data. I'm feeling a little bit apprehensive about whether I'll be able to get it.
I think the best source of the economic data from the list, and I was reviewing that again today, would be digging through sensitive data if possible. Um, we're, we're about labor. Or labor, same or Department of Labor, yeah.
Sam is.
So I bet with the assessor to find out more information on the ag stuff you asked for. She's gonna get us over the ag exemptions over periods of years and, um, I'll give you the most recent we have. Uh, and by the parcel sizes, so see if I can get you in the next cell, so she, so she seemed fairly responsive and. I sent you over information on a number of VRBOs.
Yeah, I, I was hoping, and that's for economic data, I was gonna include that. I was hoping that we'd actually have the number, but from what you told me, it's not really because they have to apply for, they have to reapply and it's hard to tease out of the information you gave me. How many do we have?
It just hasn't been consistent. How it's been processed in the department.
Yeah.
I, I guess you're asking that, what, what are you going to have to be prepared?
Exactly.
Yeah.
November first.
I don't miss. And then you ask for home occupations. Really, it's hard to know exactly how many those are. Those are kind of self-reported. If an attorney's working at his house, he's supposed to have a home occupation, right? Um, permit. Do they have them? No.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, but I.
Do any work from home, if you're self-employed.
On that, on that, my rule of thumb is you.
There's a lot.
Use the best data you have.
Right, so I can get the whole occupation data, but it also won't include CUPs. So home ox that go to a home ox three require CUP, so we'd have to dig through those CUPs to see what's a duplex, what's a multi-family, what was a home ox level three, right? Could we do it? Yeah, it's gonna take a little bit of time. So I can get you the home ox one and two real quick, and I can give you that for the next, for the last five years, but it, it will exclude some of those major uses that might have driven a bigger, you know, yeah.
VRBO is gonna be.
I'm, I, I anticipate.
Yeah.
But.
Totally.
Um.
And, and like I told you in the email, um, I think Milton contracted with some outside agency to get a list of all of them that were currently being advertised, of which then he sent out violation letters, and so you see a spike that year. You look from like eighty to a hundred and seventy or something like that. Um, and so we've got a number of the major, of the major players on board, so the ones that they manage lots of homes, right? So your Vercasas and some of those other large agencies, so they all know and they know the process. Um, one, one thing we're also considering is making that, right now, it's every two years after renewal, turning that to an annual so we can get better tracking of it. Thought about it, so we have a proposed, yeah.
I mean, how are you gonna handle? I mean, that's gonna be a standard.
Yeah.
Gonna send somebody out?
No, the renewal is fairly simple. It's, yeah.
I, I guess one of my other, just sitting here, really now and thinking about that number, it's, it's not as big a number as maybe I was anticipating. Probably because so many of them are flying below the radar.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and, and so maybe it's not really that important to have that data. I mean, if, I, I, I was, in, in the context of economic development, I was anticipating that that might be something that was relevant to the tourism element of our economy, which is pretty significant.
Yeah.
Um, but if there's only a hundred and eighty. They're there, but you know.
Pull up, if you pull up either VRBO or Airbnb, you can query it by county. And then.
Oh.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll try that.
Over three hundred.
Cuz you're probably gonna see that there is a.
Yeah, and we're not gonna have anything inside the cities, but you'll have a number of those that are inside.
And you can.
I don't think they filled those out cuz they use. Everybody, we have a cell you say.
Okay, so Dave, you want to?
Any, any of the corporate.
Wanna push that?
If, well, and I'll do what I can do, but it just seems like our agenda's getting fairly full for, for the next meeting anyway. Um, so if we could, that would be helpful to me, but if, if you want me to charge on, I can get done what I can get done.
So what's on the agenda November first? That's what we.
Yeah.
For public.
For public comment.
Public com.
Public comment.
Workshop.
The two that I gotta work out.
So then we still have transportation, schools, and then we'll have, um, my special areas.
It is. If you wanna, then let's wait till we have more data before we move on with economic development. That's a big component, so.
Yeah.
Give me a little bit more time to.
Okay. Thank you.
I get you. Give me more time. I need that. Okay.
Obsolescence data is out.
Census data is out.
Special areas and strike lots, so you shouldn't have a lot to read, but I'm gonna try to do it this week. So you have a week, maybe next week.
Gonna be in our.
Paris.
Or.
For November first.
That'd be great.
I don't think there's gonna be much there. All the relevance. But that'll be for you.
Obviously, there was.
A different approach. Last time I come.
It was very informative, but you can read the book.
Yeah, it's, it's so.
The other thing is on.
The recreation component.
On the data you gave me from Milton's analysis. Um, the, uh, the other thing I was interested in is how many lots are vacant, don't have a primary.
Okay, I think that's fairly simple.
And that's, this data I'm anticipating will be interesting when we get talking about land use, so it's been down the road a while. Think so.
Okay, I can talk to Donna. I think that's an easy.
It was mainly focused on within the current zoning, how many lots could we create?
Right.
Just within.
That was part of it, but yeah, I don't think, I don't think we ever came up with a.
But that is. Milton did that analysis before he left. He did, he did it and presented it to us.
I was looking for his data that he crunched and he, I called him, he didn't remember where he put it. He, he sent me on a rabbit hole chase and I went and looked and I found like a bigger set of where he crunched it, but I don't know.
I think he got assessor data and then he had to make some assumptions about essentially, I would call it a discount for topography and roads.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be at, in every, you know, a hundred acres, you're not gonna be able to get five twenties, for example.
We've used seventy-five percent.
Yes.
All that record.
Yeah, yes, for the assumption.
It's an interesting table.
Yeah, it would be. All right, so, um, I guess the question is, um, are we gonna set one component for a public hearing? Would be like November fifty? Is that worthwhile that we've set one component by itself?
We can do that.
You have to do that. Yeah, why not do it?
We have twenty-two days to the agencies, but.
We're out of that.
No, it's only, it's the eighteen.
It's eighteen today.
Twenty-two working, not working days, twenty-two calendar days.
Right, well, it's.
Not twenty.
It was.
All right, so.
Still.
All right.
So that'd be good.
The other, the other staff update I have, so last week the commissioners passed a number of text amendments, one big portion of that that affects you guys. There was an ability for any amendment to bypass this board and go right to the board of county commissioners, right? Um, that's been struck, so any, any amendment to the, to title twelve, um, has to come through you guys. Complan map or complan text or title twelve test, so that could be staff initiated, so county initiated, or from the public. Kind of a heads up, you'll see, so you could see potentially more of those. We, I think last year we got three that were from the out, like they were from, from the outside, not from staff initiated. Um, but I have another title twelve update that I'm working on, on some minor changes, so we'll see.
I also saw that, um, we're gonna delegate the, uh, CUPs.
No. Uh, that was a misconception, so.
I couldn't imagine how they could do that.
No, it, it already has been. It is established by state code and by our code. In, in the CUP section, it, it just said the zoning commission shall, and so I just added for clarity that your examiner as well, which I missed one spot in there that I need to go back. Um, yeah, she already had.
CUPs are, they're not ever. Of course, they are viewed by the.
They can be, yeah. So in case where there's a conflict of interest by a hearing examiner, where she just makes a recommendation to the zoning commission, then the zoning commission has the authority. By state code, they're called a special use permit, so it's kind of, you know, look at state code, it's synonymous, um.
Especially. You're ready to implement conditions?
Yes. Yeah. She has all the same responsibilities or authority to make decisions on everything except for zone change. So zoning commission is down to zone changes and then conflict of interest following, which we had one recently with her, with she knew somebody with the variance allowance. But that's the one text change that got effect, that will affect you yet. There's some others throughout that. With some other various effects of title twelve. Um, we're making a, we're sending a title eleven change next week to the board, um, for adoption, which will add Panhandle Health. This has been an ongoing discussion since the spring and how to incorporate them back into the building location permit review, so. So it gives them ten days to provide a comment to us, um, of a, of a review from the time we receive the BLP and D. Been a complete, and there's no sign off from them on the front end, it allows builders to go build with a notice from PHD as that this is where you're at with us. Um, and then there will sign off on the end of finaling a BLP. It seems to be the best case scenario to be able to add them back in without slowing down every home. They've also, she made some major changes on their side where their, their permits are now good for two years, their renewal fees, I think, got cut in half to seventy-five, so they, they're making some concessions to try to help people and.
Good. Sounds good. That's awesome.
Yeah, like this, I mean, this started back in like March, so it's been.
Yeah, it's been a topic of discussion.
Since I've been chatting with them, it's been since March and we drafted up since.
Two years.
We've gone through several trial periods with them and then, and we've had two meetings with the board that were joined with PHD. Um, so it's been a, been a lot of discussion. What I didn't want is maybe some, I don't know, new commissioners to come in and just say, let's add it back how it used to be. Um, and just really put a wrench in it, so we kind of put this lo, nice big thoughtful plan in place and.
So what's the final sign off?
Yeah, so we essentially won't do the certificate of lieu of occupancy until PHD has given us the okay. And that could, that could happen at the beginning of the permit or at the end. If it's like a shop, they, they look at it and say, there's no plumbing, there's nothing, so there's no review. You're not putting it over your drain field. That's the biggest concern they have. They'll give us a sign off at the beginning, say, no further, is that on all parcel sizes? Every, everything, it's not brought by zone or anything, it's every, you know.
Right. Hey. What do you?
So, yeah.
Oh. Were they eight twenties?
Uh, no, not the eight twenties. Eight twenties sometimes I could change it.
Oh, the test.
Hearing. Yeah. Instead of like. Yeah. Oh, yeah, typically we do those red line versions, but this is what we're taking, this is what we're adding, is that what you're talking about? By.
The only, the only, um, issue I would see that is, well, you're talking about the one that goes out for hearing?
Yes.
Okay, well, because we need to be able to make sure that all the changes that we've discussed, we want it to be made. But we need to have some sort of.
Farm size.
But, uh, not, not, not for the hearing, but we.
For small. So we have, we have to have confidence, though, that we're not, Alan, and the staff to aid all those changes.
Right, right.
And so.
I think, I mean, it's all the meetings have been recorded.
Hope it's been.
The base change. By.
Okay, but they're still going to be, uh, the red line that we've, that we had at public comment is still gonna be. It's still on our sites, is it not? I mean, you go back to it or do you delete those?
No, I don't think so. So we do have that comment in your folders, but that is not what is being put on the website.
I think it's. Why is it, why is it, why is it difficult, um, to just have the track changes?
Because now, now the places are making changes with, with catching the, some, somebody could be making changes to the day. The last track changes on the past, or what changes are going to turn into the last.
And after the public hearing, we can still change it back or.
Sure.
We're listening to the community and maybe.
I mean, that's the point.
They, they go back to the way it was.
That's the point, I mean.
But they should have a clean document. For the public.
As long as, as long as, you know, we can, we can have some some ability to look back and see the changes that we were talking about. Now, I'm sure it's, it's not, don't, don't take offense at this one, but, uh, you know, I mean, I've been drafting documents all my life and sometimes as things don't turn out the way they should, so. As long as we can have something that we can go back and look at. To meet to us.
That's true. So what we tell to the public can have all the documents.
To be clean, yeah, yeah, I think, I, I think that's the easiest way.
This, this is what's proposed.
Don't have.
Yes, yes.
And that, that's, that's a key word. It, these, this is the document that's being proposed.
This is what's.
It hasn't been the public final, and so we can go back and say, geez, you know, we're gonna change it.
Yeah.
Because of public input or.
Well, that's.
That's the whole, that's the whole idea of a public hearing, so.
Taking the job, so only thing does be made one by one. It does only be delivered to the publisher, not to the public, that's, that's.
You know, so far the form of comments we're getting is we haven't addressed climate change, so.
Yeah, we need to have a.
We need to have a discussion with that, though.
We have heard his comments about climate change.
And we're not gonna hear about them again.
Well, I'm.
We're certain of it.
Yeah, Dan. And but the point is, this is the process to listen, whether we incorporate everyone's viewpoints is the expression of this board. And, and by the way, we're only making a recommendation to the county commissioners that will be the final authority, and I'm sure they'll hear about the environment as well, so.
And I, and I would actually argue in some cases, we probably have. So for example, they will tell you, not necessarily, but they will tell you that increased wildfire risk is gonna be a result of climate change. We'll go look at the goals, policies and objectives that we've written. We have, we have policies that address mitigating the risk to life and property from natural disasters in the county. Here includes wildfire prominently.
I'm still trying to figure out.
So what more do we need to say about it?
Former ice caps were over in continental United States and they disappeared when there was no people alive. Who did it? Who did it?
Alright, so we're gonna adjourn this meeting to, uh, November first on fifteen hundred Highway two, Sandpoint, third floor.
Probably.
I think so.
We're still in voting.
Still in voting season, so I think we're still back up here, but we'll.
Usually, yeah.
Yeah.